So I am going to call to order the town of Andover Board of Selectmen regular meeting for Monday, October 7th, 2024. The time is 7:02. And our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Item two is public speak. I'm going to start with Diane Grunier. Diane, you're not being heard. Okay, while you work on that, I'm going to go to Elaine Booker.
Hi, I'm signing on tonight to go ahead and make sure that we get a full EDC operational tonight. That's on the, it's on the agenda, so that's great. Thanks.
Okay. I'll move to Rachel Bowman. Still, still.
And we'll stop for now, Jeff. Thank you.
All right. Catherine Hutchinson.
Is it working? Oh, all these different.
Diane, you're good now.
When I started, somebody said they could hear me. Now they can't. I don't know what that means.
Diane, we can hear you now.
You can hear me?
Yes, so you're up.
Okay. High-tech stuff, I'm sorry. Just. Hello, everybody. I just want, okay, let me, deep breath here. Thank you. Um, there's been some chatter out on the Facebook page this weekend, and I just wanted to, um, I'm not sure everybody was part of that or heard about it, and I just wanted to comment on it. And it has to do with, and I don't know where this is originating, but it has to do with moving the Board of Selectmen meetings from Zoom to in-person. Uh, it seems that there's some person or people out there who feel that these Zoom meetings do not allow proper, um, resident participation. Um, I know we have public speak at the beginning, public speak at the bottom, at the end of the meeting. Um, I never seem to have a problem getting in there and having to say what I have to say. Um, many of you know, um, I have been attending Board of Selectmen meetings for almost 40 years. I'm a regular participant, and I, I rarely miss a meeting. I was doing these meetings back when they were held at 3 o'clock in the afternoon at the basement of the, um, Town Office Building. At that time, people complained that, uh, it was unfair to those that worked. People couldn't get to the meetings because only six to 10 people would attend those meetings. Uh, so they moved it to 7 o'clock at night. And guess what? Uh, seven to 10 people would appear at those meetings. The same people would appear at 3 o'clock or 7 o'clock. Uh, people would complain that Tuesday wasn't a good day, Monday wasn't a good day. Um, it's dark, I don't drive at night, uh, it's family time, it's, they, they had a plethora of reasons why they couldn't go at 7 o'clock at night. Uh, we moved to, during the pandemic, they moved to the Zoom meetings, and here we've got, um, uh, the same people are attending. You, you rarely get more than 10 people attending these Zoom meetings. Uh, tonight we have a lot of people, and that's because there's obviously a hot topic. If there is a hot topic, no matter if it's in-person or if it's Zoom, people seem to manage to get to the, um, to the meetings. Like I said, there was a lot of discussion back and forth. Uh, some people have suggested a, a hybrid where you have both in-person and the Zoom meeting. I think that's a great idea. Um, either way, I go to the meeting, so it's not like I have a real problem with either way of these. Um, but I think, I, I don't know why this is an issue. I guess that's, that's my point, because, um, people don't go to these meetings for whatever reason. Again, unless there's a hot point. And tonight, it looks like there's a hot point, and I suspect that, uh, tonight's topic is probably the election, um, of, um, for the replacement of Paula King on the Board of Selectmen. Um, and I'm, just to comment on that, what do you got, like four or five people? Um, I'm surprised and somewhat disappointed that since I go to all these meetings, I have never seen any of these people attend a Board of Selectmen's meeting. Um, it seems that they wish, I would have thought that they would have more interest. Um, that, that, that bothers me. I would hope that there, there'd be more interest. And again, this is your decision. We don't get to vote. I think there's probably a lot of people here, um, somebody has done get the vote out and, um, is looking for support. Um, I'm not supporting any of the candidates. Um, like I say, I don't know any of them. The only person I know is, or seen is, uh, Steve King that I know that he's running for both, uh, State Senate and the Board of Selectmen in Andover, which I find disturbing. It's, um, which one do you want? If you win as a senator, does that mean you're not going to be Board of Selectmen? So that's a problem to me. I didn't like it when Lieberman did the same sort of thing, like, pick what you want to do. Um, but I don't know Steve. I don't know any of the, the, the people. Um, I'm, like I say, I don't get to vote, but I did want to, um, just give you my comments about Board of Selectmen meetings being moved to in-person being people. You really need to find a way to get people to come to them, and I think a hybrid is probably the best way. So I don't know if that's going to be on the agenda, if that's just jibber jabber out in the gutters of Andover, you know? So thank you for your ear.
Thank you, Diane. Uh, Dave Yewitt.
Uh, just to Diane, I'm not on Facebook, but I'm in favor of a hybrid meeting. I like the in-person. I like the conversations you can have with people before and after meetings. I think it would be beneficial for the town to move to, uh, in-person as an option.
Bob Hamburger.
This here is a spectator.
Thanks. You gotta fix that. There you go.
Yeah, nothing to say, just, just here as a spectator tonight. Thanks.
Okay. Catherine Hutchinson, I'll come to you again. Okay. Carol.
Nothing right now. Thank you.
Wayne Kasich.
Nothing right now.
Okay. Steve Willard.
Hey, Jeff, thank you. Um, yeah, I just want to, uh, throw my endorsement again, as I did last month meeting behind Joe Godwin. Um, I just want you guys, it's up to you guys, obviously, like Diane says, that we don't get our, we don't get our say, so I'm going to have my say for my two minutes. Um, I feel that, uh, Joe was much more community-minded. Um, if anybody liked, if, if we were all big fans of the way Paula King sat on the board, I think Joe Godwin is going to be the closest thing to that. Um, I don't, I don't like what I'm seeing with Mr. King. Again, I'll, I'll echo Diane and say that I'm not sure I understand, um, which direction we're going, whether it's Senator or Selectmen. Um, but I really think that, uh, you guys, you guys have a little bit of tough decision to make tonight, but I, I'm going to throw my hat in the ring for Joe Godwin, and, um, I think that's going to, he's going to be the best for the town. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mike and Kathy Plazey.
Well, I'd like to thank, uh, I'd like to thank you, Jeff, for, um, calling me so many times to talk about the new building, and I appreciate that. And the fact that we did move to the new building, uh, to have our lunch on Friday. We had a great time. We really did. Uh, and thank you very much for coming so early to set up the tables and Carol Lee, which she's always great. She helps us 100%. And, um, we, we really do have a wonderful staff that we've put together, mostly Carol has put that together, that I've just approved it. They're all great. And, um, they're, they're really hard workers. They do a great job for us. The Certified Service from Achilles, there's, uh, no other word for them. They're just fantastic group of three ladies that come and serve us, and we can sit there and enjoy ourselves. It was so beautiful. It was a great day. It was sunny. It was, uh, an excellent day outside as well as inside. Uh, Representative, uh, Steve Weird was there. He was our speaker for the day, as well as I asked, uh, Jeff to please speak. He did. Uh, people, uh, the seniors did have questions. Uh, he promptly answered them. I was pleased with that. Um, and of course Eric was there to support us as always. And, um, I just want to say we love the building. Um, we found it was a little tight, but, uh, when, when I say that, it was a little tight. We had 42 people. We didn't normally have more than like 35, 36, something like that. When it's a special occasion, like Diane just said today or tonight, it's a special occasion that we're looking for a new select person. So, uh, good luck with that, with your decision, and, uh, that's all I have to say, but thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you, Kathy. Jeff Ballard.
Unmute. There you go. Can you hear me fine?
Yes, sir.
Um, I want to speak on behalf of the, uh, Burnap Clock, uh, Ann, uh, Creme and I and Daniel Polino have met, uh, last week and found a suitable wall in the new senior center. I understand the concerns about not having it in an old community room, and I totally agree with that. Uh, I think that this has been going on for, uh, a long time. And it may be at risk of Daniel Polino pulling the clock and the works and setting it up in his daughter's house. And, uh, we have found, well, Ann will attest to this, that we found a suitable wall where the bookcase is in the middle room with the couches, and that is the place that it should be. And I would hope that the Board of Selectmen would, uh, select that as a place to have it set up. Daniel Polino is a contractor and will take care of fixing into the wall, which is not a problem and not an issue. And, uh, I would like to see the, uh, the Board of Selectmen, uh, make a decision as to the display of that clock on that wall in the senior center, where the seniors who seem to have an appreciation for history and the antiques will be able to see it. It, the room itself can be closed off, so it's not a disturbance for any meetings or any, any other, um, concerns. Um, it's just a bell that goes ding, ding, ding on the, on the hour and a half hour. And, uh, if you have read the 17-page packet that Arthur Livernt prepared on the history of that clock, I think that that, that, that should stand on its own as being, uh, something worthwhile and a very rare item that represents the history and, um, culture of the 18th century Andover, Connecticut.
All right. Thank you very much. Bill Penn. No. There you go.
Hello, um, first I'll say I, I don't know enough, don't really know any of the candidates, so I can't recommend, um, who I think is the strongest candidate. I don't know their skills, don't know their qualifications, or how these persons have served the town or even taken an interest in the town during their time as a resident. Um, I look forward to hearing the candidate interviews, and I trust the Board of Selectmen will evaluate the candidate's skills and select the one that best supplements your current skillsets that are, make up our current four members. And again, Board of Selectmen, thank you for all your time you do for the town. Good day.
Thank you. Uh, Bob and Kim Wallace. Okay.
But I'm sorry, I was having trouble unmuting. Um, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Bob and I are both here publicly, publicly to support Stephen King for Board of Selectmen as the only candidate endorsed by the Andover RTC. Um, I guess we're a little confused as to why there is a discussion, um, about why the.
One second. One second. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, Scott Hayden, can you please mute yourself? Thank you. Um, I'm sorry, Kim, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not quite sure what you didn't, did or didn't hear, but I was just saying that Bob and I are both here to publicly support Stephen King for Board of Selectmen. As we understand, he's the only candidate endorsed by Andover RTC. Um, we're a little confused as to why there, there would be, um, someone else up for the Republican spot, uh, who has not been Republican and is not endorsed by the Andover RTC. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Scott Hayden. Okay. We'll move on. Leanne Hutchinson.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, this is Leanne. Did you call on me?
I am right now. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks. I was in the process of unmuting myself. Um, I wanted to follow up on what Diane, the portion of Diane remarked about the discussion about the Board of Selectmen meeting in person again or not. I strongly support the idea of a hybrid meeting. And my main point is that the acoustics in a community room just have to be addressed. They're very poor. I've been in there for meetings, and I've been unable to hear people in the same room. And when you try to listen to it on YouTube, it's, if the Board of Selectmen goes back to using the community room or any other work for that matter, it's very difficult to hear. It's really a disservice to anybody trying to listen to a meeting and participate in its entirety. So I strongly support any hybrid meetings. Um, you know, sometimes it's just a personal preference to stay home. Um, unfortunately, COVID is not literally over. Some people are immunocompromised, but the acoustics in the community room are, are really poor and need to be addressed. I've not been in the new community center. I'll be in there later this week. Um, I was told that one of the rooms is in about the same shape. I don't know that personally. But if, if it's any room that's to be used as a meeting space, I would hope that it would receive the same, um, improvements in the acoustics if that is an issue. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, Kimberly Persson.
Nothing right now. Thank you.
Joanne Eber.
Sorry, took a minute to unmute. I just have a couple of quick comments. Um, I am more in favor of keeping the Zoom meetings. Um, I guess I would be in favor of hybrid too. I understand Diane's points. It's just those of us that do hold down busy, full-time jobs plus try to serve our community on a board like this, um, and want to be involved and go to a lot of meetings. It just, it does help out when they can be Zoom because you are able to get home and, um, you know, be involved that way. And going to like a two or three-hour meeting after a long day without even trying to get a dinner in there, that, that does make it kind of difficult, Diane, but I understand the camaraderie, and it's fun to see people too. Um, moving on, um, I tend to stay out of political discussions a lot because I try to just vote on issues as I see them. But I have to be heavily in favor of having a balanced board. I think it makes it very important on all the issues that come forward amongst, you know, the, our leaders in our town. So I would be more in favor in, in backing up, I think it was the Wallaces that spoke about, you know, if, if one of the people that, especially on a board that already has three on one side, to really be in favor of getting a Republican voted in this time. I just like to see balance. I'm not political. Okay, moving on to that, and I hope whoever does get elected. Um, I attend a lot of meetings, so I get to see names or, you know, people faces that come to meetings. So I think it is important to have had an interest in the town, been involved. When I brought this up at the Board of Finance meeting, though, I had to understand that a lot of people are busy, like, all that are here tonight, and they can watch it on the, the network, you know, on the, the television station that broadcasts it too. So just because we don't see their faces, they can see it that way. So I, I can see that. So hopefully these candidates, I'm looking forward to hearing all of them as well. Um, you know, I like to hear people on, you know, what they're going to say, what they're going to present, why they want to be a part of it, and, um, good luck tonight.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to two cell phones, and I'm just going to repeat the last four numbers, 2180. Okay. I'll move on to 6037. Okay. Did I miss anyone that would like to add to public speak? Um, I, actually I did, and I apologize.
Hello?
Yes?
Sorry, I'm the 6037. I forgot, uh, how to unmute. Um, Dave Tibido. Um, and my name probably doesn't show up, but I'm here for a different reason, but I like to comment on what I've heard so far. Um, I think that.
Dave, one second. Are you running for the position?
Yeah, I have my name in.
Okay, so then why don't we hold off until your, your time?
Okay. Don't worry.
And then the other number, 2180? No. And I, I'm going to go over to Doris. Um, Doris, I know your name is on the agenda, but if I understood your email correctly, you are a registered Democrat. Is that accurate?
Actually, I'm registered as, um, Working Families, and, but that doesn't take into effect, I was told, until next month.
Okay, so, so you are a registered Democrat. Now you're a member, you're trying to switch her to Working Families.
I already did in the summer, but it doesn't take effect until a few months after.
Okay. All right, well, we'll let you go, uh, and participate in this, and then, um, we'll just, we'll just be fair about it, and there's five people. I think, I, I think we have all five, don't we? We have Stephen King, we have Joe Godwin, we have Doris, we have Joe Tibido. Oh, um, there was one other member. One second. Well, what I'm going to do is, uh, I had received, uh, a message from, uh, from a couple of residents. The Board of Selectmen had received email correspondence, and, uh, I'm going to read the emails so that everybody can participate, if that's okay. Um, I'm going to start, and, and Jeff Murray, please correct me if I'm missing anybody, because I tried to keep all these up, but if I miss somebody, let me know. This is from.
I think we only had three emails coming in, so.
We had three emails? Okay, so let's make, let's make sure I read them all. So this one is from Liz Lokach. Uh, she's a new member of the Board of Finance. Hello, Board of Selectmen. I am, I am unable to attend Monday's Board of Selectmen meeting when you'll be deciding on the replacement for Paula King. So I'm writing to let you know my opinion as a resident and taxpayer as to Paula's replacement. Stephen King is a legit Republican, a member of the minority party as required for Paula's replacement. Not only is he an official registered Republican and a member of the Andover Republican Town Committee, he is the Andover Republican Town Committee endorsed candidate. Stephen has the qualifications, the heart, and the commitment to serve in this position. Mr. Godwin, a registered independent, claimed in his letter to the board that he had been registered as a Republican prior to moving to Andover. What evidence does he provide to support his claim? He then conveniently changed his affiliation to ensure he would qualify for admission to the board. This seems like a tactic for a possible left-leaning candidate to take over a Republican seat, which could completely upend the balance and power in favor of the Democrats. As a citizen and taxpayer who voted for Paula King, I feel that selecting a candidate other than the Andover Republican Town Committee endorsed candidate Stephen King goes against the will of the voters, and I strongly urge the Board of Selectmen to consider the negative optics of voting against the endorsed candidate. In closing, speaking as a resident and taxpayer, I am asking the Board of Selectmen to make the only correct choice, to vote Stephen King to fill the vacant Republican seat on the Board of Selectmen. Respectfully, Liz Lokach. And Jeff, who was the other one? I thought I had another one.
We just got one at 6 o'clock.
Oh, I did. I'll read that one off my phone. Give me a second. I kept that one up.
And then I'm going to look for the other one.
Yeah, I thought there was another one. Uh, we received an email from Steve McCarthy, and his is short. I like this one better. I would like to express my support for Stephen King. I believe he would be a good fit for this position. And.
Um, for some reason, my email is not going back far enough to find it. So I'm trying to get back to our meeting, because I think that email was sent right after.
Uh, I thought I sent. Well, that could be true. I copied all of the emails and tried to get them out in front of this. I know that's David Tibido. Okay, so, uh, if I missed something, I apologize. I don't really think I, I missed anything that, um.
I see a, excuse me, um, I see an email back on September 30th from a Stephen Lovelace.
Okay, let me find it.
Yep, that's it, I believe.
What day was that?
September 30th.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, but there it is. Scanlin Yankee. Um, can someone read that? Because I can't find it.
Yeah, I can read it. Yeah.
Oh, I got it. I apologize. It's Stephen Lovelace. Uh, I was looking for the email. It was under a different, uh, baggerdude@AOL.com. I am voicing my support for Stephen King. I also think this meeting should be held in person at the Town Hall. Regards, Steve Lovelace, 308 Boston Hill Road, Andover, Connecticut. All right. Um, I, I will also tell you that not in the packet, I received, uh, and, and I'm going to read this because it's, it's a I received an email from the Republican Town Committee, um, Chairperson. Um, no, I, I will, I won't read it because she addressed it to Jeff, to, to, to me and Eric. Um, that's fine. And Jeff, what I'll do is I'll send this to you. And if you want me to read it, I will, but let's, uh, let's get moving on.
Based on this matter, we should probably read all this into the correspondence.
Okay, then.
Because if these people, if, if people didn't, uh, if they couldn't come tonight and they, they took the time to run.
Carol, Carol is, Carol is not here, so it's Carol Barton, and she, so.
Okay, okay, that's, that's.
She's not here, so I might as well read it. Um, Jeff and Eric, this mail is, the email is to remind you that the Andover Republican Town Committee endorsed Stephen King to fill the vacancy, vacancy, vacancy position that Republican Paula King created on the Board of Selectmen when she resigned. Stephen King is a true Republican, not one who only changed his party to hopefully get an existing Republican position. You two are of the Democrat Party and should not be soliciting to fill position that we, the Republican Party, found a person to fill the Republican position and have endorsed that said person. Also, it would be a smart idea to stop having Zoom meetings. COVID is no longer causing large issues, and we now have two community rooms that we, that need to be used for community meeting. All members of all boards and commissions to return to normal meeting. Residents should be advised that this will be happening, and hopefully happening very soon. Thank you, Carol Barton, Andover Republican Town Chair, Andover Resident. Okay.
All right, Jeff, I've got one more that came in on 10-6, I think that we forgot.
Okay.
It says, it came from Lorraine Fox Cos, Cos Tano. So I'd like to nominate Stephen King of Andover, Connecticut for seat on the Andover Board of Selectmen. I believe that he will bring a particularly strong set of skills to this role, and that the Board will be fortunate to have him as a member. He is a dedicated and hardworking, extremely organized and focused on learning and developing best practices to manage any activities he may face, face working on the board. I've known Stephen King for many years, and I've worked with him in the same IT department at the University of Connecticut. I hope you will consider giving Stephen an opportunity to be part of your organization and serve the town of Andover. Sincerely, sincerely, Lorraine.
Okay. All right, is there anything else that needs to be read into the record for, um, public speak? Okay. Let us move on to, uh, item three, um, so I, I'm just letting everybody in the public know, um, that please mute yourself, this part of the meeting we're gonna move on to is for the selectmen, uh, select people, and apologize. And we will, um, we will be bringing in the candidates to speak that are available, so, um, we're gonna move on, so we're gonna go to item three, additions, changes and changes to the agenda, anybody on the board have anything they wanna add or delete?
Um, are we gonna have an executive session to discuss the candidate?
Uh, we can have an executive session that will require that all of the members of the public will be needed to be put into the waiting room. Uh, we can add that, um. I don't have a problem with it.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, uh, so we're gonna add, uh, and we're gonna add.
John Denley would like to contribute to the conversation.
Well, I, I, Mr. Denley is my best friend and as you know, I was hopeful that he would show up on time to participate in public speak, which is now.
Well, I've been, I've been online for thirty minutes waiting for my turn and I heard you give my number, two eight one zero, and I was unable to get through.
Don, you were unable to mute, unmute yourself?
No. Maybe, I don't know what it was, but I didn't.
Don, 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 here you go, go ahead. I'm reverting back to public speak to allow Don Denley to talk. You're welcome.
Thank you. Don Denley, Lakeside Drive, Andover, I would like to first of all, address the meetings, obviously being a, uh, a senior, I much preferred, uh, in-house personal meetings, because you got to interchange ideas with people in the audience and with, and with our elected officials. But a hybrid meeting would certainly be a reasonable compromise. Um, as far as the candidates go, I would like to personally endorse Stephen King. I think he's a, he's a Republican nominated, uh, uh, replacement for Paula King who did a great job, I'll miss Paula King very much, who's a, a great, um, town, town person who contributed to our, in many, many different ways. But Stephen King is, is the choice of the Republican Party, he's taken a Republican seat. Uh, the fact that he's running for another office is, is really not that relevant. I mean, he will certainly abide by all the meetings and be a conscientious participant, and I think he'd be a fine choice, and I think that's the choice you guys should make, I know that it's a primarily Democratic majority right now, but I think that, um, well, I feel that Stephen King would be the right person for the job, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for what. Thank you, Jeff, for letting me speak.
You're welcome, Don, you know it. Anybody else that I miss, anybody, anybody? All right, everybody mute themselves, so we have, uh, a motion on the floor for an executive session to be placed, um. We're gonna call it, um.
Don, please mute yourself, please, Don.
We're gonna call it. We're gonna call it seven seven two, seven one, uh, executive session. And what we're gonna try to do is determine if we need to speak about the candidates after the interviews are over. Is that acceptable to everybody? Okay, anything else we need to add or delete?
Um, I wanna have a, uh, I know Eric sent me some information, but should we have some discussion over the proceeds for the auction of the Public Works Equipment? And where that, uh, where those funds are going to be deposited?
Sure, um. Uh, Jeff, newbusinesstenE.
It's fine with me.
Okay, uh, proceeds from.
Can we do it under nine G bid result for roadside mower?
Oh, thank you.
It's just not the roadside mower, though, we have other pieces of equipment that we're selling, so we needed.
We could do it at the same time.
Okay, I'm fine with that. We'll just amend, amend that line item to say uh, roadside mower and other equipment.
And truck.
How about we, how about we call it nine, uh, H and we just say proceeds from equipment sales?
It's fine with me, I'll second that.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay, so, um, we have two, uh, items that we're gonna vote on, one is an executive session, a seven dash one and, uh, nine H, uh, discussion regarding proceeds from equipment sales. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, none, all those abstain, none, for nothing. Okay. We're gonna move on to item four, a board and commission presentations, um. I'm assuming, do we have any board or presentations that I would hope we could push till next meeting? Uh, Elaine, are you doing anything related to EDC? I don't wanna short you, but.
Nope.
Nope, okay, you just wanna know that we can deal with.
Just get, get the appointments in, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna move on from item four, we're gonna move on to item five, uh, five A, um, Liz Lokech was appointed to the, uh, Board of Finance and that's just for informational purposes only, um. Item, uh, five B, the EDC requests appointments. So, Don, um, Elaine, if you could, just tell us what you're, what you're asking for, I.
Sure, yeah, because, because we're a five-person board and we're, we're down to two people. We don't have a quorum, so we can't by rights vote in new members. We have to turn to the Board of Selectmen to do so. And we have two people who now want to join the EDC. Um, Patrick Doherty, who was on the EDC before and a great member, but then he got a new job and had to work second shift and third shift, so that's why he left the board. But now he's back to first shift and pretty steadily, and so he's rejoined, um, planning and zoning. And now he wants to rejoin EDC and we certainly need him, because he would be, uh, he was before and would be our liaison to everything going on in planning and zoning. So we need, uh, Patrick Doherty, um, appointed and then, um, Beata Gadamsky, um, uh, is, uh, also, I believe, on the new, um, field improvement, um, board, working on the, uh, new playground and, uh, pickleball. And she's, uh, quite involved, um, she's quite an involved resident, really, in, in other things involving the town, so. Uh, she's a Realtor, a- as I am, so, you know, we, we basically know about this, the sales and marketing and all of that, so that's a really good, uh, position to have, um, information to have, so, uh, we definitely would like Beata.
Let me, uh, let me just make a motion on those two, because I think it's great that they're willing to volunteer for, for the town, so I'm gonna make a motion, we point Patrick, uh, Doherty, Doherty and Beata Gazamsky to the EDC to, uh, and, and I'm gonna step one back, Elaine, what's the term, is the term just the normal four years, so they have three years remaining?
Uh, it's two-year terms.
So it's gonna expire in, in twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
So, uh, I'll rephrase this, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint, uh, Patrick Doherty and, uh, Beata Gadamsky to the EDC for the term that expires in twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
All right, uh, further discussion on the appointments? All those in favor? Aye. Right, be for nothing, thank you, Elaine.
Thank you.
All right, um, resignations, Eric, do we have any additional resignations?
Oh, we do not.
Okay. Um, we're gonna move on to item seven with the, this is elections for the Board of Selectment position that is currently vacant. As I said to, I sent out an email to all the candidates, uh, on Friday. I, uh, told them that we would give them an opportunity to speak, I'm hopeful to keep it at three minutes, I'm gonna time it, I'll wave to everybody if we're getting to it. And then we're gonna give the members of the Board of Selectmen an opportunity to answer or to uh, ask any questions of any of the, the potential candidates, um. No, I'm just gonna, we're just gonna move on, so, um. In the list, it was done alphabetically and I know that we have Mr. Godwin here, we have Mr. King. I know we have Doris, I saw her, and we have David Thibodeau, Jose Rivera, uh, sent an email earlier today. And, um, when we get to him, I will read the email. So, um, Mr. Godwin, you're first on the list, um, I will ask that you, you, um, you provide us some information and what I'll do is, um, we'll see how it goes and if I have to wave at you, I wave at you, is that acceptable?
Yes, sir, that works and you can mute me if you need to as well, so.
Oh, I try never to do that, I don't wanna do that. All right, um. Um, any of the other members of the Board of Selectmen have any other issues as to how we go about this? Anybody wanna say anything? Will we get going? All right, Mr. Godwin, the floor is yours.
Right, thank you, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to talk. I do apologize, my presentation skills, um, are a little zapped, I've been working down in southwest Virginia, getting folks' power on, so. Heading back home, uh, tonight and tomorrow, so looking forward to be back. Um, you know, just going a little bit about me, um, you know, when I, when I first saw this, uh, position open up, I saw actually multiple vacancies as, as we all did. Um, you know, and it's not something I had considered ahead of time, um, but saw an opportunity to serve, serve the, uh, the town, so. Uh, figured I'd put my hat in, in, in the ring and, uh, hopefully be useful, uh, for the town and be helpful for, for our residents. Um, you know, kind of to clear the air, uh, you know, I was never a registered independent. Um, and it, no offense, Jeff or Ann, but I've never been, um, uh, I've never been accused of being a Democrat, so it's a little Twilight Zone to me to, uh, to hear that, um, but I guess that's what I'm asking for, putting my hat in the ring, uh, and being politics as what they are. Um, I am a conservative, so, uh, I'm hoping, just kinda give a quick overview of who I am. So I'm originally from the Groton, New London area, uh, and I moved away to California and Louisiana, moved around a little bit with the military. And then, uh, back to Connecticut in twenty nineteen, so could have landed anywhere in Connecticut. Um, you know, wanted to kinda have a close, uh, mix between home and family and work. And, uh, driving around, we, we settled at Andover, so we really love this small town feel, um, you know, we, we, we appreciate that. Uh, we had three children at the time, they're going, all going to AES and we found Ram, the school district, very appealing and decided to, to settle here. Uh, we've had a fourth child, uh, in the town, uh, again, he's going to AES, so they're all huddled there along with my wife, who's a teacher at AES. Um, and, you know, we have a heart for our kids and, you know, I think our, our level of involvement's probably been, uh, not as much as we would like, just because there's bedtime at six, seven o'clock, but we're, we're getting during a new phase of, um, of life and having a little bit more time in the evening, so looking to, to, to serve in a capacity that'll be helpful to the town. Outside of work, uh, I'm an elder at Hebron Church of Hope, right down the road, uh, most of you are aware of it, you probably drive by it all the time with the big red barn, uh, little white church in the center of Hebron, so you can find me there on Sundays, um, and that's what I do outside of work. Uh, but as far as professional experience goes, uh, I'm an emergency manager, uh, I oversee the emergency management program for the state of Connecticut's, uh, ever, for EverSource, the state of Connecticut. Um, and previously I was doing emergency management in the oil and gas industry and my introduction to that uh, profession was through the United States Coast Guard, so I went through Cape May, New Jersey, Yorktown, Virginia, and, um, you know, through that experience and consulting, doing oil and gas and government, uh, I've worked with every single level of government, so. Uh, from your small towns in the middle of nowhere to, uh, you know, all the way up to the White House, uh, doing reports and, and working with, uh, with different leaders. Um, you know, I've got a proven track record of solving complex problems, uh, and I use project management, program management and change management techniques to do that. And, uh, you know, I have served the town before in a different capacity, um, you know, but you kinda see a need, fill a need, uh, we had a traffic issue around the lake that, you know, unbeknownst to me was an issue for a long time. Um, you know, speeding around the lake, so, uh, served as the Traffic Safety Committee Chairman, uh, did that, we saw some some efforts around the lake to, to do some traffic calming measures, so I worked with Eric and, and the team, uh, and, and yourself to, to do that. Um, so why me? Well, I, you know, I'm not a politician, guys, uh, I'm not gonna pretend to be one. Um, I just wanna get back to the community, you know, I served in the, uh, uh, the Volunteer Fire Department for a little bit, COVID hit. Uh, my son has bad asthma, so kinda had to bow out of, uh, doing volunteer firefighting. Uh, but, you know, I enjoyed that group of guys and I can't speak enough about them. Uh, worked with Steve, um, you know, we've had emergencies at our house and Steve is one of the guys that showed up in his pajama pants, so, you know, y- you look at this community and, you know, the people that are in it and it's very tight knit and we're not planning on going anywhere, so I just wanna give back my time and energy. And then, you know, again, leader, proven track record, I vested interest in the town for, uh, not only myself, but my children. Um, you know, I'm a conservative, I value people and I, I value individual freedom. And again, I, you know, just looking at that, I do have a good balance of being a visionary and, uh, a pragmatist, so, you know, I, I like to hear everybody's viewpoints, vantage points, uh, everybody's perspectives, I think they're valuable and should be considered. Um, things like, you know, the hybrid Zoom. In-person Board of Selectment meetings, I think, I think there's a valuable opinion that, that has some, some consideration to be had. And then I think my current skills would complement, uh, the Board of Selectmen as they are now. Um, you know, I, I did switch to a Republican, um, but, you know, that, that's what I was back in Louisiana, southwest or southeast Louisiana. And, um, I was unaffiliated, um, for a while while I was up here and, um, it, I guess it wasn't relevant in the time. Uh, again, uh, I'm not politically m- motivated in, in that fashion, so. Um, but I am a conservative and, and so being a Republican is, is something that, um, that I do embody, so that's, uh, that's all I really have to say, I appreciate everyone's time, thank you.
Joe, thank you. Um, uh, any members of the board have any questions for Joe, Mr. Godwin?
Um, Joe, you, do you have, uh, you're sure that you have time for the Board of Selectmen position?
Yeah, absolutely, you know, the trip that I'm on right now doesn't happen, but every three years or so, uh, when we started looking at catastrophic storms and moving out of the area. And then with my kids, they're all gotten to the age now where I do have time in the evenings, um, so, yep, I will be able to, I, I can't, uh, jump on an ambulance at, at, at a whim, but I definitely can make time to, uh, to engage in the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
What happens next week when you have another category five come through Florida?
It won't be me, it'll be somebody else, thankfully, so, yeah.
Okay. Uh, anyone else?
Yeah, Jeff, I'd like to ask my few questions.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, Joe, you mentioned you, you were a strong conservative and you mentioned that two or three times during your discussion. And if that conviction was so strong, then why didn't you not register as Republican, join the RTC? Partake in elections as a Republican and, um, question number two, you said you were on the Safety Committee, um, you did address some speeding. I'd like to know a little bit more about your experience with the fire department and, um, you, you mentioned it, so. I wanna know, uh, what was your involvement with the fire department and are you still a member?
Yeah, no, great, great questions, um, you know, yeah, so I am a conservative, I'm a conservative Christian, I'm conservative, fiscal conservative as well. Um, and, you know, registered down in, in Louisiana, I registered as a Republican as soon as I could vote, I voted Republican. Um, moving up to Connecticut, um, you know, there was questions of the, the political, uh, field, I, I didn't know what was what, to be honest with you. Uh, living down south for as long as I did, there was differing views of what to expect, uh, moving back up north, so. Um, I went unaffiliated, which means I, I didn't pick a party, um. You know, and that gave me some time to really digest the, the political field and, you know, how I was gonna vote. You know, I typically vote, um, you know, Republican, um, you know, there's not, I don't think there's a situation, um, in which I wouldn't. Um, you know, but I am considered bipartisan, uh, I don't, you know, I don't do, um, you know, I don't, I don't devalue other people's views, if that makes sense, uh, but, yeah, so, you know, I didn't see the, the need to, to go Republican because I was voting Republican. Uh, again, I'm not a politically motivated person, um, but I do vote and, um, you know, the RTC, I did reach out. Uh, once I saw the, the newspaper ad about the vacancies, uh, and by that time they had already. Uh, and by that time they had already endorsed a candidate, uh, so there wasn't even time to engage, um, it from that format. Um, and to be honest, I hadn't heard of the RTC, um, in town. I don't think there's been any outreach that I've seen, um, so wasn't sure, you know, really what to expect with that. And, and again, my, my level of time to, to commit to pure politics, um, you know, is, is I feel better served with my family instead of, uh, pure politics, so anyway, um. Yeah, and then the Fire Department, you know, I come from a fa- family of firefighters, um, you know, so I wanted to, uh, kind of do some of that as well, uh, so I joined and, uh, participated, rode the, uh, the ambulance with, with Kim and, uh, Karen quite a bit and Scott, um, doing lift assists. I didn't go to the academy, um, uh, I'm not a, uh, a, you know, a certified firefighter. But, you know, did, did help out jumping on those ambulances, um, and, and helping some of our residents around the area. But I needed it, um, and then COVID hit and things got a little bit different, so I did, I did bow out. And, uh, and I'm not, I'm not a member anymore of the Fire Department, but again, um, still, still have those relationships, so.
Okay, like my concerns are as being a conservative. I mean, when I moved to Andover, the first thing I did was look up the RTC and I joined, that was the first thing I did. So I'm a little concerned as a Republican and the only person that's on this board, why you chose to re-register as a Republican on the last day before this was going to close. Um, it's just an issue that I have, why you weren't a Republican from day one? And it's just, it bothers me a little bit and, um, it, I'm, I kind of question it, so.
Yeah, that's a fair point, that, yeah, that there's no deviant, um, intentions, but I, I understand.
I would like to make a comment that I, I spoke with three of the leaders at the Fire Department today. They all, they all said about the same thing in different wa- ways, but they said that Joe was a very, very nice guy for one thing, you know, morally good, a hard worker, intelligent, smart. These are the three leaders down at the Fire Department. They told me they had nothing but good to say about Joe Godwin. The only reason he got out of the Fire Department because he had too many, uh, things going on at home.
Scott, and that brings to my concern, as a Board of Selectman member, we all know how hard this job is and how sometimes we need to do things at the drop of a hat. And it does pull a lot on us and it does pull a lot on our family, and so we need somebody that's, needs to step up when they need to step up, so, um.
And he, and he, and he just said that he would.
Yeah, well.
Okay. Um, uh, uh, unless anybody has any direct questions for the candidate, I'd like to move on. Anybody else? Ann, okay. All right, uh, Mr. King, you are next. I, obviously, Mr. King, I have some flexibility in the time, so we're going to give you what you need, so you go to it.
I'll try to hold to the three minutes, I know that, uh, this could run late tonight. First and foremost, uh, my last name is King and I have not any relationship to Paula King. Uh, but I would like to thank the Board of Selectmen for considering me as a replacement for, uh, my fellow Republican, Paula King. A couple of things I want to start with, first, um, you've probably seen some signs with my name on it running for State Senate. I don't expect to win, uh, in, in launching a political campaign or, uh, aspirations. It takes a couple of cycles to gain traction before you can even begin to muster up the type of votes needed, especially in, uh, uh, the District Four, which is, uh, uh, predominantly blue. So I don't expect to win this election cycle. I'm nearing retirement and I've also freed up a great deal of my time, uh, recently retiring from the state military. So I have a lot of extra time on my hands and I'm looking to, um, especially after becoming grandfather this past, or last spring, last year, um, trying to promote some change, maybe I can make a difference and, and do some things. Uh, and if I, I, I don't want to get to a situation where, um, I haven't at least tried. So that, that is the reason why you see my name on the signs. Um, it certainly will not impact, uh, my ability to serve, uh, as a member of the Board of Selectmen in any way, shape or form, so. My name is Stephen King and I've been an Andover resident for some 14 years now. Live on Burnet Brook Road with my wife Julie, who was born and raised here in Andover. Her mom still lives here on Pine Ridge in the home that she was raised in. Um, we are here to stay and I hold only the best interest of our community, the residents and my neighbors at heart in seeking this appointment. Since my resident, resume was not included in the packet, provided I'll give you a little background, uh, or a little brief on my background. I have a Bachelor of Science in Managing Information Systems, postgraduate certification in healthcare information technology. And I have over 40 years of experience in designing, implementation and support of critical technology initiatives. Uh, I'm employed at UConn Health, going on 12 years now, a little over 12 years, where I manage high-performance computing, data storage and virtualization technologies, provided to the UConn campuses, including support for approximately three, $350 million in grant-funded research. I'm chairman of the Board and Chief Range Safety Officer for the Andover Sportsman's Club here in Andover, Connecticut. Certified NRA instructor, Chief Range Safety Officer and a chief instructor for the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. I donate my time to teach conservation, education and firearms safety statewide. I am a federally licensed firearms dealer and the owner of Pop River Trading LLC, a suc- a successful small business that I started many years ago, which, uh, I manage estate liquidations, high-end collections, appraisals and sales. I'm also the president of the E. Connecticut Gun Guild, which by statue holds a seat on the State Pistol Department Review Board. Couple of things I want to say about, um, the proceedings and what's happened, uh, to date. I'd like to point out to the Board, um, those present and the voters of Andover, that I am the only Republican Party endorsed candidate seeking appointment. Our charter recognizes state statutes, which identify a maximum majority of three from a party of a Board of Selectmen when there are five total seats. The remaining seats must allow for minority representation. I also must point out that the state statutes are clear in identifying that if an elected member of a ma- minority party resigns during their term, which Paula did, they must be replaced by a representative of the very same minority party. Therefore, the currently vacant seat, the currently vacancy must be filled by a Republican. Now, the optics of changing one party, changing one's party at zero hour for the mere purpose of qualifying, qualifying for this seat and minority representation do not reflect well and should raise suspicion not only by this Board, but by all the residents of Andover. I am the only properly vetted and as I stated, endorsed candidate seeking this position. I trust that you will find my qualification satisfactory along with my skills to fill the void left by Paula, who supported a lot of the technology used by the town. I'm happy to donate my time now that I have some free time and look forward to a strong and successful bipartisan working relationship if you allow me the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, anyone have any questions for Mr. King? Uh, I, I have one. Mr. King, you said you're, you're running for the current State Senate seat, but you don't expect to win. But you went up, you went on to sit there and state that you were trying to, um, build up name recognition for future endeavors and what would those future endeavors be? Your, your goal is to become a State Senator or hold higher office?
When I retire in, uh, it's been looking, looking to be three to four years. Uh, if the opportunity presents myself to run as a State Senator, um, I will do so, I would like to do so.
No, no other questions?
No, I'll, I'll ask Steve a question, like what, what else? What else do you do in town besides the Andover Sportsman's Club? And what does the Andover Sportsman's Club contribute to town and how are you involved in that?
I had that question asked of me today, um, we do a lot of, uh, uh, events that raise money and we, uh, raise money and food for the, uh, uh, Food Pantry.
Do you know how much you donate every year to the, to the Food Pantry? Do you have a general?
Probably in the neighborhood of, well, it's a lot of food, so, um, anywhere from $800 to $1,200 worth of goods a year, uh, through the, through the charitable events we do.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? Ann?
Well, most of my questions he's answered already here.
Scott?
Good, Jeff.
All right. Um, Mr. King, thank you.
Thank you.
Doris Maldonado. I know you were on the call earlier.
Yes, I am.
All right, Doris, we, some time for you.
I think there's an, uh, a delay, but, um, good evening, everyone. And, and I appreciate your time. I definitely am not, um, registered, I did not know, actually, the public notice that, uh, specified only that, uh, interest re- is interested residents to, uh, apply as long as they were in Democratic. Um, so all were invited to apply, which is why I applied. The reason why I haven't been, um, uh, haven't applied or participated on this board has been because I've participated on the Board of Education with, um, uh, with funding opportunities. I just moved here, um, with my children two years ago in August and as soon as I moved in, I started to, um, to connect with, uh, townspeople and, um, and the Board of Education. So, uh, I was the, a little bit about me. Uh, I was, uh, appointed by the governor as the Chair of the Development Disabilities Council, um, which is federally funded and I've served as Chair statewide and nationally, uh, on several boards and, uh, regarding disabilities. I was born with a disability, so, um, I take that very close and it's near and dear to me and which is why I've, um, afforded some opportunities and connections for Andover as soon as I moved in with the administration, the federal administration with for community living, for, uh, and so that Andover can receive or apply for some funding, um, to make us more accessible uh, in the, at the community center and other locations, if possible, through the Board of Education and other opportunities. Um, I've worked as a, I've worked and advocated, um, and trained, um, communities from the life, on the lifespan from birth to, um, aging as to their legislative rights. And when I say birth to lifespan, I mean their parents and their communities. So I would love to be a resource if I am not, um, eligible for this and I'm sorry if I'm, I'm taking up your time. But I wanted to formally introduce myself and, um, wanting to help when I can and, uh, offer opportunities. We're a small town and I, I'm, I'm making my, my, uh, I'm rooting myself here with my children. Um, we did come from West Hartford and then Berlin, before that Connecticut. And so I'm very invested in every community that I live in because I'm trying to leave a better place for my children and my, my fellow community members. I've spoken with many of our leaders in town, um, and trying to connect and I have, um, I have volunteered and reached out to, to community members. So thank you for, I am also a substitute teacher, um, and I, I am a certified teacher. So whenever I have the opportunity, I do, um, help out. Thank you for your time and I wish you well in, in this endeavor.
Jeff, you're muted.
My bad, I did it denly, I apologize. Doris, thank you very much for, uh, for, for participating, um, you know, I, I would tell all the members of the community to volunteer as much as they possibly can, so thank you very much. Any of the other members have, uh, any questions for Doris?
Yeah, just a quick question, did Doris, did you just change your party affiliation from Democrat to Working Families, correct?
Yes, in the summer I did.
Yeah, so you have the three-month rule, so that makes you, I think it's she's eligible to run for this position.
The reason why I applied, as I mentioned before, was because the public notices said that anyone other than Democrats could apply. And at the time, when I saw the notice, I was other than a Democrat, so it wasn't clear for me. But thank you.
Understood.
All right, anyone else? Okay. We're now going to move on to, um, Mr. Thibodeau. I know you were on the call.
Yep, I'm here.
There you go. Okay, sir. Thank you for bringing your.
No, I appreciate the opportunity. I know I was late coming into this, uh, application process. Um, I think that from what I've heard so far, you're not going to go wrong by whoever you choose. Um, I feel like I need to endorse Stephen King, but, I'm kidding. But, uh, congratulations Stephen on becoming a grandfather. And, uh, to Joe, uh, for someone that thinks he doesn't have good presentation skills, uh, they are pretty good. But, um, you know, I'm not going to pretend to be a politician, I'm not. Um, the reason that I applied for this position was merely because I believe that there needs to be a paradigm shift in government that it no longer needs to be treated the way it has been in the past and it needs to be more treated like a business because it's just too large. Um, government needs to seek other revenue besides taxes. And being an engineer, um, I've worked many years, um, overseeing multimillion-dollar programs in aerospace industry and realizing that, um, in, in both military and commercial. Uh, military obviously is easy pickings, but, um, the commercial industry is not and, um, budgets are very important and knowing how to manage a budget and, um, being able to manage contractors and reducing costs are very important. And since I left aerospace, I've been working in manufacturing for the last, uh, 10 or 11 years and reducing costs in their business, reducing costs over 50% in just their overall, um, expenditures on what they spend on, you know, electrical and, and things like that. So, I, being an engineer, I think differently than, than most people and I think some members of your board can understand that, that I am a problem solver. And I have been for many years and I've been trained to problem solve and to look outside the box and figure out solutions that are not clear to most people, that maybe there's another alternative of revenue sources and things like that, um, to bring money into the community that is not merely taxed. As everyone knows, we're taxed so much in every way and it seems like government today looks at, well, what are different ways I can tax? Can I tax on the air that they breathe? Can I tax on the water that they drink? You know, it, it, it's becoming a little bit ridiculous that I think that government, and I'm not talking about our local government, I'm not talking about this committee and talking in general, that there is just no looking differently at how to be, how to create revenue other than taxes. And I know there are revenue sources other than taxes. I don't know, um, the resources that are involved in, in getting them, but I feel like the paradigm shift needs to happen, not only in local government, but in all government, that you can't just rely on taxes to run your community or your, or your country. And I think that we're seeing that.
Can we, can we, I, 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 I'm sure everyone appreciates that, but on a local level, do you have anything else you want to express to us regarding this position?
Well, I mean, I, my views are, are expressed at the local level as well. I mean, I think that even at the local level, you can create revenues other than, um, taxes. And, um, you know, I'm thinking as someone that's not a politician, um, it may not be a popular opinion, but that's just how I feel. And, uh, maybe I'm not, you know, I don't think the way that you do, but, um, I think that there's other ways of thinking outside the box.
Okay. Does any of the, any of the members of the Board of Selectmen have any questions for Mr. Thibodeau? All right, Mr. Thibodeau, thank you very much for participating, we appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Rivera, Jose Rivera, he sent an email. Uh, he did copy emails on this, but I will read this. Yeah, Mr. Mr. Thibodeau, please mute yourself. This is from Jose Rivera, David Rivera. So he's like, I appreciate your consideration for the vacancy. I unfortunately will be working on Monday, second shift, 3:00 to 11:00 p.m. and will not be able to attend. I have been a nurse since 2015. Prior to that, I was, I was licensed in the insurance industry. I have been a registered Republican since I was 18 years old. I am now 49. My motivation to apply, to apply for the position of selectman is the desire to make a difference in the lives of my community in a positive way. I have never served in such a position. In my position as a nurse, I have come across thousands of individuals in their time of need, offering guidance, care and empathy for points of view that may not have been mine at the time. In the end, the goal was always to serve. So with that, I feel I am ready to serve my community for the, for the better. Being a part of the process is what compelled me to apply. My only reluctance is that I'm still working. So if being readily available is a requirement, then I see an obstacle in me serving due to my working schedule. If any consideration can be made for the scheduling of meetings and voting on issues, I would appreciate that. I look forward to hearing from you and thank you for your consideration. Jose David Rivera. That being said, we have now completed the candidate interviews. I'm assuming that the board would like to go into executive session. Is that accurate or not?
Yes.
Okay, then someone needs to make a motion to that extent.
Make a motion. We go into executive session?
Second that.
Ann Kremay seconded that. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, we're going to restart our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting at 8:50. We are on item 7B, the nomination and election of a Board of Selectmen candidate to replace Paula King. Do we have any nominations for candidates?
I'd like to nominate Stephen King.
Second.
So Ann Kremay seconded. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Two-two. Do we have any further nominations?
I'd like to nominate Joseph Godwin.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Okay. We've reached an impasse on this issue. We discussed, we wanted to come out in public and, and make that vote. What we're going to do is, in moving forward, we're going to have a four-member board for this point. We're going to convene with the town attorney as to our options, as to what we can do. We are also requesting that Republican Town Committee and look for additional candidates if all possible for our next meeting. If we can get to that point and find an acceptable candidate to all the members. And we appreciate everything from all the members and all the individuals that did apply for this position. And you can still apply again. That's not what we're saying. We're just saying that the four of us did not come to a resolution between ourselves. So sit there and we will continue to move on with our board meeting at this point in time, unless any of the other members want to say anything, because I think it's pertinent that you state your piece in public.
I just want to say that, as you informed me today, Jeff, for another reason, totally a separate reason, that there is a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen scheduled generally for the 21st of this month, which is two weeks from today. So the board will be, you know, meeting again on the 21st and, you know, there's no agenda been set yet. Oh yeah, there has been. There's an agenda. I, I looked at it today because you, you, you told me. I didn't realize there was a meeting.
That, that, that special meeting is not related to, it can't be related to.
I, I know it's not.
It's just a, it is a Q and A session for the charter. So anybody in town that has any issues related to what is being voted on at the November election for the charter revision.
Okay.
We'll go over that. So, so let's actually take them as separate issues. If the Board of Selectmen needs to convene and have a special meeting to vote and to have this discussion outside of a regular meeting, we can do that. I, I have no problem with it.
Okay, just wanted to. All right. Good enough.
All right. Let's move on to item eight, Town Administrator's Report. Eric?
Sure. Okay, can you guys see me? And can I share the, can you give me authorization to share? So I can share my report? Or do you want me to just tell you orally?
No. Where did I have to go to more? To get you on as this? Host Tools. Oh, see, I share, I think I'm sharing my screen, not your screen.
Right, correct. So I think you have to go to, you should have, as the administrator, you should have a button on the side of the share thing that allows you to designate either, you could either designate me as a co-host and then I could share.
I've already done it.
Okay. Okay, and I'm going to make this bigger. So once again, I apologize for getting you the, my administrator's report late. Sorry, that's a little too big. So I'm just going to go through some of the, the key things of it. The, I got a note from Art's sign a couple hours ago that the welcome sign is to complete. So that's been a long time in coming. We should hopefully have that installed kind of in the next month at the location that the board already agreed to. The sign below it, we'll get to later in the agenda. That is the rails-to-trail sign that the DEEP asked the town to install, both on town roads and to get permission from the. So, so that is something you would have to weigh in on as the local traffic authority. So as of tomorrow, we will have wrapped up the HVC project for the town hall with the, the firing up of the gas furnace and boiler in the town hall. I did submit the second DOT micro grant. One of the items on there that we requested funding for was to hold an adult bike safety class. That would be scheduled for October 26th. So if any members of the audience have interest in learning how to be a safer cyclist, the announcement will be put out shortly. That Joel, that grant also included the ability to purchase safety vests for all the AES students, as well as supply additional safety vests for the adults that will be located in the community center and town clerk's office. We also intend to run a bike rodeo for the kids at ATS to promote bike safety next spring. And we have money in the budget to provide helmets for the participants. We're also hoping to find two additional Andover residents to send to the League of American Bicyclists Instructor Training. So we did get a little bit of, of good news, and that is we finally got the ARPA grant that's specifically for the senior center approved that came through yesterday. So now we're going to look at spending that money on equipment for the kitchen. So we'll get the kitchen a good ways towards being a functional kitchen in that building. We also hired Randazzo Design Consulting to, you know, re-rockhound and then seed the areas outside the community center, and they will finish that up tomorrow. Also Wednesday, we're going to finally get the fiber run into the community center. So we should be able to, hopefully in fairly short order, get the VoIP phones installed and also the rest of the IT working in the building. And one of the things that I just received today that I want to talk to the board about is we received a request from the elementary school to provide transport to one student on a daily basis to attend essentially a gifted program at the high school. They don't really have the bus capability to do it. The town could potentially do it with our, our bus without really impacting anything at this point. And the school is aware that on those days when we have script scheduled, you know, we wouldn't do that. So we still need to check with the program administration to make sure that we can do that. But I think we can with our existing 2017 bus. We charge them the same mileage reimbursement as currently. So I'd just like to ask the board if you have any issues with me pursuing that as a town? Because it will save the school money and it shouldn't really impact the senior transportation program. I don't know whether the board wants to weigh in on that, but if you do.
Should we, should we weigh on, in on these things as they come up, Eric?
Well, that's not on the agenda because I just got that literally an hour before the meeting. So I don't know.
When does it need to start? And why do you need to use one of the buses? Why can't you use the RAV4 or one of the smaller vehicles?
Well, we could, but the problem is then we would have to go ahead and we would have to put all the carrying schoolchildren logos on a second vehicle. So that's the only downside of not using. We could use the RAV4 because that one is definitely, we bought that with the town funds. But at the same time, the RAV4 is used during that same timeframe pretty regularly doing medical trips. So we would just be switching medical trips to one of the vans instead of using them.
Okay, and when does it need to start?
I don't have a start date for it at this point.
Okay, then. Get us on the phone and, and let's sit there and see, you know, we'll prove it. I mean, it would be nice to know a start date, but find out the rest of the information and then let's get it done.
We should, yeah, we should, you know, work on this.
Yep, okay. So we did hold the flu and COVID clinic today. We vaccinated 68 people and gave a total 105 shots. So that was pretty good. On another important note, we've been trying to fill the CEO and white enforcement officer position now for about three months because Jim Halcy has indicated he is retired. We finally, after that period, ended up with two candidates that applied. Neither of them have any real zoning experience. They were both really good candidates. They have a lot of experience, just not with zoning. So they both have enforcement-type experience, but not a lot of experience with zoning regs. So we have identified a candidate. The interview panel was myself, Scott Person, and the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Jed Larson. So what I would like to do is hire Andover resident Wayne Kasich. But what we're going to need if we hire him is a fairly long overlap between him and Jim. Because he's going to need to get up to speed on zoning, which he definitely is not at this point. So basically what I'm proposing to do is we hire him at about $27 an hour, $27.50 an hour. And at the point when he's capable of working unassisted, he would go to $31 an hour. And when Jim retires, and then his final salary will be what the current salary is when he receives his CASO certification and the zoning commission is happy with. I'm coming to you because ultimately as a board, you're the one that needs to approve any hiring decisions. So do you have any questions for me regarding that?
And this has to, you know, I'm glad that Eric brought this to the board tonight because we have to act on this. We have to talk about it and then, you know, hopefully act on it because we get, the time is running out for Jim Halcy, as long, how he, as long as he's going to stay here. So it would be good if we could get Wayne involved, you know, right away if we could.
Listen, Mr. Halcy didn't have any experience when he first started doing this. I thought, you know, he was trained extensively by Attorney O'Brien and you, Eric.
No, Mr. Halcy was a pretty experienced CEO when we hired him five years ago. He had quite a bit of planning credentials also. He was basically just retired from an equivalent full-time.
He worked his whole life at it in Manchester.
From an enforcement perspective though, which is what we're focusing on, right?
He had been a CEO quite a bit before he took the job in it. Being a CEO was not a, a stretch for him. I mean, look, if we can get Mr. Kasich up to speed earlier, we would certainly do it. And I mean, Jim doesn't really have any particular desire to work any longer than he has to. But the, the reality is there's a lot of towns looking for CEOs right now. And we don't really have an opportunity to, unlike the last time when we hired Jim, you know, we had multiple people with CEO experience applying. We just weren't willing to pay them what the going rate was. In this case, we can't even get anybody with CEO experience to apply. And frankly, there's a bunch of towns that pay better than us right now that are looking for positions too. So I think the likelihood of us having to do something other than on job training is pretty small. So that's what I'm, that's what my goal is with this.
This guy does have a lot of experience enforcing, just not zoning. He spent his whole life enforcing regulations.
Okay. I mean, do you need us, Eric, to approve his hiring or what do you want from us?
I mean, technically, you're the ones that should be approving any permanent hiring. So a motion to approve hiring Wayne Kasich would be, you know, would be appropriate. If you want to talk to him, he is on the Zoom call. So you could certainly talk to him directly if you so chose.
I mean, we don't need to. He's your chosen candidate, right?
Correct.
And Scott was on the board or on the hiring committee?
Correct.
Okay. Scott, do you want to make that motion?
I make, make a motion to allow Ando, Eric to hire Wayne Kasich for the zoning enforcement agent.
I'll second that.
Second that.
Ann seconded that. Great. Ann seconded that. Further discussion on that? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Jeff? Aye, Floro. Okay.
Okay, perfect. I will make that happen. Moving on, we do have a discussion coming up between Jay Toddle and myself and EverSource regarding tree trimming on Burnet Brook Road. We're hoping to get them to contribute again to our tree trimming planning. Public Works is going to do some shimming on Cone Road in Gilead because both those roads have seen some really bad, you know, potholes lately. And we want to do essentially a rough shim on those roads and just a couple of the worst sections of Skinner Hill Road prior to winter. So that.
Just, just as a question, isn't Cone Road about six years old? Maybe a little.
Yeah, six or seven. Yep.
And so why, just so we understand and we don't make the same mistakes again, what was the problem with that? We didn't, we didn't do a good enough job on the, on the substrate on that road?
Exactly. That's what happened.
Exactly the case. That was a decision by the board. Exactly the case. That was a decision by the board uh, based on some public feedback that were very unhappy that it wasn't paved to uh, pave uh, Cone Road. Um, and there was never any real sub base on the road. So that was a
Okay.
That was an issue going back to original conditions on the road.
And is so, so you're just trying to shim or do a pothole filling on that road just to get through the paving season?
Yeah, we're we're band-ating it at the moment, yes.
Very definitely. When I lived on that section of Cone Road, it was a dirt road.
Correct. And when it got paved, it got paved. It just got paved. It got paved.
Right over the dirt.
Real sub base put on it.
Right over the dirt.
Alright. So, yeah, unfortunate. So just so everybody knows, regarding Bunker Hill Road and the bridge at Bunker Hill Road, there is a current R F P for the construction firm has been issued. Closing date is October thirty first. Um, with the assumption that we're talking about a February fifteenth start date for the project and utility relocation. Um, the town doesn't need to do a whole lot for this because this is a fully funded project. There's a specific plan in place already for the bid review. Basically, C D McGuire, the engineering firm, is responsible for reviewing all the bids and determining who legally meets uh, as the lowest qualified bidder. Um, so that will be going on. Hopefully we should uh, you know, a firm should be selected pretty soon after October thirty first, so we can get that project rolling um, after a long time.
So who is doing the tree cutting down there? Is that already uh, established?
So Public Works will do that in uh, November. Um, not Public Works, but Public Works will hire either tenant, probably tenant to do the tree removal in November. So.
How many trees are there down there that have to be go?
So there's like six um, trees that need to come out. It's not a ton. But that is because there's a new federal uh, species, threatened species that have been identified. We have to take the trees down now prior to the bridge program starting. Um, or else we have to wait until a very short window in April, which will delay the initial moving of utilities. So the town is going to take that on in November. Um, last thing on my report is we reconstituted the town's safety committee. As many of you know, as an employer, we are required to have a safety committee. We've been kind of slacking as a town. I have specifically. So we reconstituted the committee. Um, we had a meeting on October first of those. We came up with a couple of uh, action items. We did agree to purchase A E Ds for Public Works. Um, given that the majority of the employees there are fifty five or older. Um, and we've worked out with with the fire department to conduct employee training once we have the new units. We're also adding stop the the bleed kits for community center, town hall and public works. Um, and as part of the grant application that we have in, we're going to do a little awareness campaign and encourage residents to wear reflective vests when walking near dusk and dawn. Uh, both for plow season and also because this is pedestrian uh, Safety Month for uh, the federal D O T. So that's basically everything I have from my report, unless you have questions for me on any of the material that I.
Do we have to weigh in on that sign that the D E P is putting up?
Uh, we do have to weigh in on that, but that is on the agenda. Um, that is item uh, ten D A through C.
Okay, two, two things on my end. You didn't mention that uh, you had a meeting with Representative Courtney at the senior center the other day and were given uh, some contact information to try to uh, improve our performance in federal grant applications. So um, should have added that one. And the other thing is from the senior under the safety committee. And as you write, safety grants, there was a recommendation at the senior luncheon about uh, solar lighting, uh, street lighting. Um, I thought that was a rather good idea. So let's sit there and see if there's any opportunities for different areas within the community where we don't have to pay EverSource for electricity to light the streets, but we can actually do some solar lighting. It might work well. So.
Good idea.
Any grants for that? That would be great.
Sure.
And and I have a question about the outfitting of the community center also. What, what were you planning on buying?
So.
Without the list that you.
Say again?
The list that you had before?
Uh, a good chunk of the list. So we know we can buy anything that's movable and not run afoul of state rules. So we're going to buy the uh, refrigerator, we're going to buy the freezer. Um, we're probably going to buy a commercial microwave. Um, we'll probably buy some shelving. We'll probably buy the coffee maker for making the full air pots full of coffee for senior and community events. And we're going to buy a com- combo water ice maker. Um, since those are just tabletop devices that have a single water connection. So that's what we're envisioning. And then depending on how money goes, we'll look at other things to flesh out the rest of the funds within the brand.
Very good.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Eric? Alright, let's move on to old number, item nine, old business. Discuss next upon the following, I nine A, community center signage discussion. Do we have anything if you're further to discuss on that, Eric? Do you have any rendering tour?
We do not. At the last meeting, you were going to, or the board was going to consider coming up with uh, what you wanted for lettering and an overall design for the sign. So that was your, an action item from the board's or not much.
Alright, we'll put that off for the next meeting. Send a text to somebody. Okay. Nine B, discussion of blight and level of involvement.
I don't have any updates for this meeting.
Okay. Nine C, the tri board policy on A E S capital projects.
Okay, that, that is in the packet. Uh, is the one that was written um, and approved by the Board of Ed. Um, and reviewed by the Board of Finance and then Dennis O'Brien, the town's attorney, also put in what he felt was a uh, more correct version of how that was written. So those are both in your packet to review and Dennis can probably give you more uh, input on that than I can.
Yes, yes, I was asked by uh, uh, I think it was Mark Brinker, it was the Board of Finance uh, or some intermediary that it was going to go to the Board of Selectmen and they asked me for a uh, my opinion on it. So I uh, spent a good amount of time, as I often do, on on projects and uh, came up with uh, decided to, instead of adopting uh, what they had written, which was pretty good. I I looked at so uh, some drafts that Eric had written in the past and uh, did a lot of independent research and came up with a um, policy that was more to my liking. And it was in the form of, I put it in the form of an agreement among the three major boards in the town. Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, I should say Board of Selectmen first, Board of Finance and Board of Education. Um, the, I had some variances from the policy that was recommended, uh, adopted by the Board of Education. Uh, one was that um, they wanted to set up a, a three, three board, uh, a tri board with six members on it, two from each board. I recommended that there be one from each board and that that member be the first selectman of this board, the chairman of the, the chairman of the other two boards with the uh, vice for selectmen being an alternate and the other boards having their vice chairs as alternates. And the other thing I uh, put in there that they didn't have in there was that I thought whenever, you know, it's a question of, if they have excess money at the end of a, at the end of fiscal year, where does it go? I mean, they already have the authority to reserve two percent of it into a special capital fund that is under, by statute. This would be a fund that is in addition to that. And I made it, they didn't say anything at all about uh, you know, uh, you know, whether, whether they could do that on their own or whether somebody else needs to approve that. And I, I, I put in that the Board of Finance needs to approve it. If they're going to withhold money and put it into a special uh, fund that they're going to, they're going to retain for capital uh, capital products in, 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 at, at the school. Uh, I believe that the Board of Finance should be, you know, should say whether they can or not. They, they should, you know, in advance, whether the board can withhold additional funds for that capital fund. I tried to streamline it, put it in the form of agree, an agreement and uh, what I, what I, what I did was uh, in your packet, it's the second item. I believe there's two items, uh, both two pages long. And uh, the first item is the one that was drafted by, I believe it was drafted by uh, Shannon Lowden of the Board of Ed and uh, Robert England of the Board of Finance. And uh, I agreed with a lot of it and there were some items that I took from uh, prior drafts that Eric had written. One, one item I.
Can I ask, I ask a couple, just a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Um. Don't we already have a process for this? By going to C I P and getting funding for what needs to be done in the community? Aren't we just adding more? Layers of bureaucracy onto this?
That's not what.
I'm asking, I'm asking Dennis, and I'm asking Dennis, and and Eric actually.
That, well, uh, the C I P is involved in the process anyway. Because the C I P would make recommendations to the uh, Board of Finance, if the Board of Fin- I didn't put them in here.
The Board of Education has a member on C I P. C I P makes recommendations. And those recommendations get funded appropriately based upon the overall needs of the community, correct? Am I missing something in our process?
You would have to, I, I, I'm not that familiar with the way C I P works. I, 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 I know what it is. I've read about it in the charter. I've often wondered why, why it exists. But um, the um, Eric would know more about how it operates. I don't.
Oh, okay. So the, where, where it becomes questionable with C I P is see in the charter, the, the C I P is a committee that's established by charter.
Right.
And in the charter, one of the things that's in there is a statement that the school is ineligible or is exempt from C I P. In other words, does not have to go to C I P. But the, the flip side of that is because capital requests in major capital building projects really are the, the bailiwick of the Board of Selectmen. I personally think C I P still has a role. Um, but that's open to interpretation and, and I'm not an attorney, so I can't weigh in on that.
I, I think it has a role as an advisor, not as a, not as a decision maker. And I, and I think it is.
Well, the Board of Finance is the end decision maker.
Yeah, well, well, you know, is the, the way I see it, the Board of Selectmen is the primary board in town, the Board of Selectmen.
That is, that is not how I see our power. Our power is to advise and sit there and say, these are projects that we should consider. It goes to, it goes to C I P. C I P sits there and, and sits there and goes back to the Board of Finance to get any spending approved in this town. The Board of Selectmen doesn't approve any spending in this town.
Finance has a seat on this tri board.
The Board of. Correct, I understand, but I'm asking you, I'm asking you to think of current process. And why, why are we trying to put another layer on top of the current process?
I didn't agree this uh, this.
No, 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 I am not asking and and.
Let me tell you, I think I should just get rid of it. I, I don't, I could.
I'll let you go. And you tell me why we should be creating this.
Let Ann tell, what, why?
Okay. Um, this is because the school is asking to, the Board of Education is asking to have a new fund or new source of, then a new place to put money when it's extra from the year's budget. They have the two percent they can already put into the other fund. But this is when they have extra money instead of having to return it to the tech school, to the town because they um, this money was designated for the school and they want to keep it for the school. So this was designed for that and it was just that the, the tri board, three boards are all involved in how that money is then spent. Uh, but it's, I have a number of problems with this new uh, agreement that Dennis had put together. Uh, can I point those out now?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to hear all about it.
Okay.
I do.
Um. One thing is that they wanted the membership to be from two members from each board and not just three with alternates, but they wanted the six people, two from each board. Um.
Why is that better? Why is that better? I want to interrupt you, but you, you raised that, that's a, that's an issue that I, I couldn't agree with, disagree with you more. Involving more and more people does not, does not make it better.
Well, this is what they, the agreement had been, agreement between the Board of Finance and the Board of Education.
And, and is this from you or is this from the people that wrote the document?
I'm looking at these two.
I'm asking you, are your points, are your points that you're bringing up, your points or the points of the individuals that wrote the document?
Well, it's looking at the document they wrote.
Okay.
That's what I'm looking at.
I, I, I did that and I, and I decided that. Go ahead.
Um. One of the big things is that down in section two, it says during the period from July first to August fifteenth, the Board of Ed may deposit the previously appropriated money in. That's not going to work because they've got to wait till the audit is done to know what money they really have left. Otherwise, they could be wrong and they could put in, try to put in more money than they really have left.
What, what, what date would you suggest?
Uh, it simply has to say after the audit is completed. Because there's not a definite date that the audit will be done by.
So.
Wait a minute. You're talking about the following, uh, following ca- calendar year? Going into, going that far?
It might be two months, it might be three months. Sometimes audits take a lot longer.
I just picked that out of my, uh, out of thin air because I, I, you know, it's got to be done soon, soon, sooner rather than later.
Well, you do want it to be done sooner, but putting a deadline like August fifteenth, that will never work because.
What's, but you got to have a deadline. You can't just leave.
Deadline is when, you could say a month, within two weeks or within a month after the audit is completed.
When is the audit normally completed?
I don't know exactly, but think of how long it's taken the town to finish their audit sometime.
Well, that's what I'm concerned about. So, so then that, that gives the Board of Ed uh, months and months and months to sit on this, on this money.
I mean, it can't be helped. Last year, they thought they had a hundred and twenty thousand left, I believe. And then when they finished the audit, they found it was like a hundred and four, a hundred and five.
Well, you're making sense, but uh, but, but I, I, I think it's got to be done hot or quick, more quickly than that.
Well, I have a question.
Yeah.
What was the inspiration for this? I mean, what came up that they, someone thought that they needed to have this?
I believe it was because the school needed to have a cap, a fund for capital items and they didn't have one. And this was a way to start developing one.
You know, that's, that's not true.
Town can also put.
We created that fund.
We created the fund.
And we funded.
Board of Selectmen created that fund.
Funded the.
Okay, so they can, yep, that's true.
So what, what is occurring here in this document, which bothers, which just? It shows a lack of understanding that this board will do what is right. It is an issue that this, the, the, the Board of Education primarily is not believing that the Board of Selectmen will do what is right and appropriate for the entire community. And that's what bothers me. We're putting in a whole other layer and we're saying, hey, Board of Education, if you are over budget greater than 2%, because this is what you're saying, we're saying, Anne. Greater than 2%, we're going to take what we over budgeted and we're going to put it in this fund and now we're going to have control of that fund to do capital projects. So, so that's what this, this is saying to me and I'm sorry, I, I don't, I don't, we have a process?
That's why I changed it so that the. Control.
I don't believe that most of the time when there's money at the end of the year that's left over, it's not due to the budget being too high. It's because Valerie and Taylor did a great job of getting in grants and maybe they had extra that year because of all the grants they brought in. And you don't want to penalize them because of that. They should be able to save that and use it towards capital projects someday.
Well, my way of looking at it, Anne, is that this can happen without that big document. That same thing could happen without the document.
I would, I would like to understand that, Anne. I really would. I would like to understand that. And I don't want to penalize anyone for working hard to get grants for our community. That's not what I'm saying. But we are putting in an extra layer and what it is saying to me is that I won't, as a member, my vault won't be cash to do what's right for the community and right for the school. That, that's, and, and, and honestly, I don't even approve, I'm not, I'm not on the Board of Finance. I don't have the ability to say, I'll spend it or I won't spend it. They decide whether they'll spend it or don't spend it. We recommend to put money, just like we recommend to put a hundred thousand dollars in the school building fund that we established because we know we have issues. We know we've got to get them solved. We know we've got to help them. But this document to me is another layer of bureaucracy and, and this, and the Board of Education.
Not the one I wrote. You're talking about theirs, right?
No, both of them, even yours is the same thing.
Mine is better, mine is better.
Yours is better. I don't care better. I'm talking about the, the whole process.
It includes the Board of Selectmen, which is, which was ignored. And the other.
I don't care for it. I mean, we already have a process in place. This is putting another level of.
Uh, it, it, Jeff, and I can see the Board of Education's point on this too, because there's nothing going on right now. We're all just debating, you know, standing around and debating and we're not really getting any with this capital fund that we're working in. Well, I can see, I can kind of see their side, you know, to, to get something established so that we can, you know, move this whole thing forward. I, so I get their side a little bit too.
I, I'm not saying I don't Scott, I'm not saying I don't and I'm not saying I don't understand what they're asking for. I'm asking for why.
Right, right. I, I, you, you kind of have to look at both of these sides here and Jeff's point is very valid. Very valid and the Board of Education is, you know, trying to figure out a way forward, I think.
Well, the way forward currently is they get to keep because the state just changed its law and it, and its statute that this, that, that the board without approval from anyone else gets to keep 2% of their over budget money. They keep it in a fund and they use it, you know, for their purposes.
Yeah, that's for non-capital stuff.
And I see, what I, what I also see is distrust between the Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen and that's be- because of things that have happened in, uh, past.
What?
That have happened with the Board of Education and the monies.
I'm still asking what? Tell me. Yes, what happened?
Well, like a year ago, when they had money left at the end of the year, they wanted to put it towards fixing the parking lot, the upper level. And they kept running into roadblocks and saying that they couldn't do it. That's one thing. Other things, they just feel like they haven't, I know one thing that started with this, that they wanted to try to find out what a capital project was. And they finally just put down there at the bottom that the.
Non-reoccurring.
It's the non-reoccurring things that are.
My, my copy.
Yeah.
That's good.
That's pretty much the same.
Yep.
The, um, the, uh, the membership of the board is what's a bit different and how they vote. They really wanted to have the vote with all six people for the first two votes. And then if they couldn't come up with an agreement, they would go back to their boards and each board would decide how they were going to vote and they send one person to vote finally.
It's way too complicated.
Well, this is what the Board of Finance and the Board of Education, Shannon and Robert worked on for a whole year.
I know.
And I feel like we should allow them, those two boards, they're the ones that are dealing with this more than the Board of Selectmen. We should approve that for them.
But. The, the, the whole thing here is that there's a, a, a just distrust between the Board of Education, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance has always has been because of things that have happened over there that weren't right. And like I said, Jeff, that they're trying to figure out a way forward and, you know, the old driveway thing is just sitting here. Nobody's working on the driveway. Now we got a big plumbing issue. We got, you know, four or $500,000 worth of work that needs to be done and they're, they're looking for a way forward, I would say. And, and we're not, and we're not giving them the way forward. Or we, we're not even addressing what it is. We got, we have to, so they established this thing, Shannon and, uh, um, Robert England.
Robert England.
To, you know, to, to go forward with this. Now, so I read through it, there were things in there that I didn't really like either. We need to address the situations in some manner.
So you're telling me Scott, that we're not thinking about what capital projects.
And I absolutely believe we talk about it for five months every spring.
Every, okay.
That's why, that's why I'm.
But whatever, whatever anybody wants to do, let's see what you got.
I, I've already.
Forward on this? I mean, we, do you want to, you want to, do you want to work out wording?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'm not saying that we need to use their, their agenda. We can come up with our own agenda or we, or can, we can have Dennis do it.
I'm just telling.
That's what I tried to do. I tried to give you something.
And there is a process in the community that can be followed and will work if everybody just participates. Come with the programs. Did the school come to the Board of Selectmen prior to the decision to redo the parking lot? Did the, did, did the Board of Education go to CIP and tell them that the driveway was in? State? Okay, there's a process. Let's follow the process. We can all work together. No one on this board is unreasonable. But my gosh, we cannot follow, we cannot not, we cannot follow a, a process to work together to sit there and get things done. And so now what the Board of Education is doing is saying, we're over budget and we're doing a great job in this and this, I'm going to paraphrase. We're doing a great job. We're getting a lot of grants. So we offset some of our expenditures and we reduced our total costs against our budget because we pushed those costs to grants. We want to use, we want to have control of how we use this money. I have no problem working together with somebody to say how we use that money, but the process currently is you keep the 2% lapsing fund and the rest of the money goes back into the, the, the town, um, general fund. And then those funds are then determined how it's best used for capital projects. The school is our biggest asset. It has to be the biggest taker of all of our spend.
That was a good paraphrase, Jeff. Very good.
It's just reality. We put a $400,000 roof on that building six years ago.
Yeah.
Don't tell us that we don't spend money on that school. Do we communicate as best we can? Absolutely not. I will flat out stand here and I'll agree with you because I'll tell you why we don't communicate as well. Anybody on this board included in on the drafting of that proposal?
No.
No.
Because it was between the Board of Finance and the Board of Education mostly.
Then what do you want for me, Anne? I was, I, did I communicate it too? No, I wasn't. But there is a process. We have it in place. If you choose.
The CIP, but the town, the school doesn't have a capital improvement fund, which.
It doesn't own the building.
Well.
They have a line item.
They have capital improvement fund. Even if you say they don't own the building, they have a fund in other towns, but we don't. That's why they want to get one.
We, just one quick point. We do have a fund.
We do.
The Board of Finance with the approval of the Board of Selectmen approved a fund last year. Um, we moved money from the old AES unexpendable capital from the, the last, uh, project.
Tensions in the agreement I wrote.
And added a hundred thousand to it this year. And then.
The idea is that it's going to be guiding that and it will have the three boards involved.
You don't want to involve everybody. It's a waste of time.
But make a decision. Do you want to go back to Dennis O'Brien and you want to try to work out a document? If that's the goal, then fine, have, try to have at it. I believe there's a process in place.
I just tried to give you something, could work with Board of Selectmen and work with the other two boards. And, and everybody would live happily ever after. There wouldn't be any kind of, of thing. You know, the kind of situation I want to go back to is the, is the community center. And what happened with that? Okay, that wasn't, that wasn't fun either. That was, that was.
We don't, we don't need to rehash old stuff.
Oh, I don't want to.
Go forward. So Scott and Anne, since you two are, what would you like to do related to this?
What you said tonight was absolutely factual. There's, we need as a board to come up with a plan to, you know, establish, like I said, a way forward. We have to, if you're just going to say that, you know, we already have a, we already have the charter to tell us how, what to do and if that's as far as we're going to go, we're still going to be in the same spot, I think.
You're right. You're right, Scott.
Listen, what is the same spot?
I, I think, I think.
The Board of Selectmen recommending to the Board of Finance to spend money to repair items within the school? The school and the, and the superintendent and the board members can all come to us and tell us what they need to get fixed. And then we can figure out if we have the available resources to fix what they're asking us to fix. And if they happen to be over budget, that money ends up in the general fund and it gets used to fix those items. I mean, it's not that complicated. We don't need to complicate it anymore as far as I'm concerned. If, if the, this board wants to do that and complicate it and, and gets enough votes for it, have at it. It's what's the rules of the town. I'm just telling you, it can be done. We know we've got to do things. We're not unwilling to do things. It's not like this board. I, I've been on this board ten years. We have.
We're very willing to do.
Never communicated, never said no to the Board of Education as far as I know. We have had community problems within budgeting. Yes, that is true. But this board, honestly, my entire time, even the previous group of people that were on this board, we never did anything to the, to the Board of Education. We don't have any control over the Board of Education. All we have to do is work together on the improvement of the building, the upkeep of that building, the upkeep of the parking lots. That's our job.
Yeah. Um, we, we need to talk to them about this whole subject, I think. In some wa- way, I, I don't know what way, I mean.
I have no problem. I just believe there's a process in place. We just all need to work together. We need to do a better job. I need to do a better job. The members of the Board of Education need to do a better job. The, the members of the Board of Finance do a great job. I mean, and they, they sit there, they just approve it. It's yes or no. Will you spend the money or you won't spend the money? That's their job.
Well, they felt there was a need to have this fund. This helps to understand how the money goes into that capital improvement fund and how it is spent. Um, I think it, I know CIP, but I think this would give a better basis than just CIP because CIP is just the spending of it, not the putting it in to the fund, to into this fund. If you put it in the general fund, that's not helping out the, the, uh, capital fund for the school.
Well, if I understand it correctly, Eric, and please tell me if I'm wrong, did CIP recommend that we put a hundred thousand dollars in the building fund?
Absolutely. CIP did not.
Wasn't CIP.
We do.
We did, the board.
We did.
And the Board of Finance.
Agreed to that.
Board of Selectmen did it. So what the, what the Board of Finance intended when they created the fund was a capital fund that excess funds could be put into or the town could budget annually for that and add money to the funds and have a permanent fund specific, like all the other capital funds that they have, but specifically towards capital maintenance, capital projects at AES. So that fund is created, um, there's currently a fair amount of money in there. Um, because the Board of Ed put, I believe, a hundred and $4,000 in it. There was already $8,000 in it. The town contributed another $100,000 through the budget process. So that money is sitting there. Presumably if the Board of Ed has excess funds, they have the ability to request currently that the Board of Finance put that money into that fund as opposed to returning it to the general fund. So they have the right to do that. The Board of Education also has the right to spend from the 2% non-lapsing account on capital projects.
I don't think so.
Be education related. That's the auditor.
That's for, that's for, that's for day-to-day expenses.
Hmm, I, that is not what the auditor indicated.
Well, that's what the statute says. I, I have to, I am really reluctant to disagree with you, Eric, but that, that is, uh, on something like that, but, uh, because you're there every day plugging away. But I, I really think that that 2% fund is for maintenance and, you know, not capital projects.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna.
I'm, I'm willing to help with this, but I, I, you guys, I mean, I just, I just spent a lot of time re- rewriting that thing. I was asked to do it and, uh, I don't know, um, CIP is a part of the charter. It's, it's there, of course, it's part of it. But you're not going to take everything that's in the damn charter and put it in a short agreement. It's just part of it.
Um, I, I would ask the members, the other members of, of the board, so Jeff and Scott, and, and I know where Anne is. But, uh, please communicate with Dennis and tell him directly.
Me what you think.
For the meeting, what you want him to sit there and address within this document, if you want him to address anything within the document or, um, and then let's put this on the agenda for a next cycle and then I'll reach out to Celeste and.
Next regular meeting, after the election.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody have a problem with that? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Um, nine E, a King of Property Agreement. So Dennis, we're coming back to you. Where do you stand currently?
Jeff, can I in- interrupt one thing? We did skip item nine C. And I think we can wrap this up in about five seconds. I sent this all my recommendations for how we make the building department. The costs for building permits fair. You all got a spreadsheet. There are building officials willing to, to fill that out and adjust anybody's fees that are inappropriate based on that calculations if the board is in agreement with that and wishes to, to give. And wishes to, to give me that guidance.
I didn't have any problems with the document that you provided us. Anybody else? I mean, because I was trying to do the math. I'm assuming that you're gonna do first floor square footage, second floor square footage, overall square footage for the electrical permits. Overall, like a square footage for the plumbing permits, so on and so forth.
Correct.
Well, what is the percentage of the actual costs versus what we get in permit fees? Eric, what, what should they be and what? What are you calculating that they are going to be?
So generally across the board. We estimate it as, it, it works out to one point five percent of the construction cost. Of the estimated construction cost of the project.
That's, that's what I got, one point seven. But, um, what should it be?
Uh, it should be whatever the town chooses it to be. I mean, the goal was always for the building department to basically pay for itself in permit fees. The question then became, do you want it to try to cover the fees for the whole land use? So including planning and zoning and wetlands, which is far more problematic to collect enough fees to cover. The whole agency cost.
You, you look at the, what we get for building permits versus the estimated, the estimated cost. And they're estimated too. Everybody underestimates every single one of them. And, and it bothers me that. Every month, this is happening to the town and we're getting burnt every month.
So approve the spreadsheet. It's at least.
Is it, is it going in the right direction?
Oh, absolutely.
It's definitely going in the right direction.
It will go in the right direction, Scott.
Well, we'll check it next month to see.
Okay, we can, we can up the rates if we choose to. But, but at least. The estimate will be based upon the square footage of the project. It'll be based upon some, some tangible fact. Not an arbitrary estimate of the overall building cost, which we know are totally deflated.
They are. You know they are.
I know. So use the spreadsheet. If the building inspector is willing to implement that spreadsheet, I'd say implement it immediately. I'll make a motion.
Well, two years ago, he told us he would do this, but that never happened either.
Let's go. We're doing it now.
All right, make a motion.
Then, I'll make a motion that we authorize the building inspector to. Utilize the spreadsheet that was provided to us to calculate, uh, future building permits fees.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Sorry for skipping that, Eric.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you. Thanks for revisiting it.
Yeah, um, uh, nine E, a King property agreement. Uh, Dennis, where are we, uh, with?
Where we are is, uh, I have been working the last part of last week for quite a while. With the attorney for the King family, uh, uh, Mr. Tom McDermott from Waterbury. And I have gone over the, uh, meets and bounds and all the maps and all the details of the. Transaction, the papers he's, he's developed and, um, found some, uh, things that had to be changed. Minor mostly. Uh, one thing I did do was insist that we get a warranty deed for the property that's going to us. And he has, uh, graciously agreed to give us a warranty deed. Whereas on the other hand, we're only giving them a quitclaim deed for the, what we're quitclaiming to, uh, the King family. Anyway, uh, we have, uh. Decided that we're gonna go forward with this real soon, subject to your approval. And I prepared a, uh, a motion. For you to approve today, which I sent to Eric and I think I sent Jeff a copy. And if you would like, I'd read it to you right now.
Um.
If, if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
But say before this, this approval is done, sorry to interrupt Jeff, but. That our zoning officer goes out and it takes the deed and goes over the property and make sure that where it says there's a pin, there's a pin.
Why is that required?
Because, because it, it's as soon as you sign the deed, they'll never put the pins in.
Okay.
Very important, Jeff.
Okay, um.
You're talking about all the things that are on the plans, uh, Scott?
Yeah, make sure that what's on the plan, it says a pin, make sure the pin's where it's supposed to be.
Okay, I'm glad you're asking the zoning officer to do that because I'm not the right person to ask to do that. Yeah, I think you know that. So anyway. That's fine.
Okay, um, Dennis, read your motion.
That fits, that fits in with my, my motion. Okay. It's where, it's where, okay, it's, it's a little bit longer than you might want.
Of course.
It has been agreed to by the attorney for the Kings. Whereas the Board of Selectmen has been assured by Town Attorney Dennis O'Brien. That he and Attorney Thomas F. McDermott, representing the, uh, Julie King and Lisa Marola King, the Kings. Are both fully satisfied that all necessary legal requirements pertaining to the two transfers. Of property expressly contemplated by and encompassed within the Town of Andover Special Town Meeting. Approval on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four of said transfers of real estate located within the Town of Andover. To and from the Kings and the Town of Andover have been or will be. Fully accomplished in proper legal order and format, but soon, very soon. It is hereby resolved that Attorney O'Brien be authorized to do all that is legally necessary. To work with Attorney McDermott to properly and legally close said transactions forthwith. So authorizing me to finish up the deal, do it right legally, properly, and that would include what Scott has just suggested.
Okay, Scott, do you wanna, um. Do you want anything added to that? I mean, I mean, can I add anything to it or can I, can I let it go, understanding that you're requiring that the pins be placed?
Right now, it's taped, right?
Okay, so, um.
You have a copy of that, Jeff?
I do, um.
You do.
Somebody should write that. Somewhere that it's, the pins are to be, uh, located.
Okay, we'll do a separate, we'll do a separate.
On there. There's a lot of them.
There are a lot of them, yes.
A lot.
Okay, um. So I am going to sit there and make a motion that. I'm gonna, do I have to read? I'm gonna read it again? I don't really want to.
Oh, don't read it again.
All right, um, does anybody, does anybody have an issue with, with Dennis's motion as he read it? I mean, it's fairly simple. We're giving him the authority to sit there and finalize the documents that are required to deal with the lot line.
So do you just add a motion to that?
I will. I'm gonna sit there and go, we're gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the resolution. As drafted by Attorney O'Brien to allow him the authority to finalize the lot line agreement with the King family. And, uh, with, with the stipulation that all necessary pins are placed on, on the property line.
Lot line agreement, including the, uh, the, the, the real estate transactions. Cause it does include the real estate transaction.
Okay, um. Is that acceptable to you?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
All right, um. Any further discussion on this? Uh, I am sending the. Email to you guys. So, okay, no further discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Okay, so three, zero, one, Eric.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, nine F, a Burnap clock discussion. Um, I know this has come to us a lot and I was over at the senior, the Community Center, Senior Center. Multiple times this last week and, um. I know it's a piece of history. It should go in the museum. Um, but that's my personal opinion. Um. Has everybody seen Anne? Have you seen where it's supposed to go?
Yes.
Are you comfortable with it being there?
Yes, I am. I think it's a good spot. It's out of the general traffic so that it won't be, you know. Damage from somebody walking into it. It's protected. It's got a security camera right above it. It's not gonna get affected by the heat and the air conditioning because that unit is on the other side of the room. And I think it's a good spot for it. Um, I know you'd say, like you say, long as it's a museum, but. Our Andover Museum, I don't think is heated all the time and it wouldn't be a good place for it. It needs to be in a, a climate controlled area.
Think he's talking about Smithsonian.
Well, in the, um, I got the copy of the information from Jeff Ballard. And there are similar clocks in various museums. Historic Deerfield, Winterthur Museum down in Delaware, the Metropolitan Museum of Art, the Wadsworth. And the Connecticut Museum of Culture and History. That's where there are five other clocks similar to this one. So.
I'm not saying.
Yep, one here. I'm glad that we have got the opportunity to have the Andover. Not many of Burnap's clocks were signed as Andover. Most of them were Coventry or East Windsor. So it's good that we have an Andover.
Yeah. Um. Eric is the, um, was Tess engaged in this placement?
Uh huh, yeah, she was with us.
Okay, so Tess saw the placement. Tess had basically asked and you'll see under new business. Um, she had just suggested that. You know, before you start putting stuff in the community center, you come up with some kind of a policy on the donations. Um, you know, and, and really decide who has the authority. To suggest that. And you may wish to retain that authority as a board of selectmen. That's certainly your choice. Um. You know, but. There's pluses and minuses to everything. Right now, you know, that I know of, the library. Is, uh, wanting to put a larger bookshelf in that space. Um, you know, and they've had a, some discussions with Tess over that. Another disabled veteran has requested or has talked about putting a mural on one of the walls in there. Um, in that same room, but again, that hasn't been, so. Uh, somebody dropped off, you know, a giant container full of bulbs. That they wanted the senior center to plant today. People have dropped off puzzles, you know. We need to have some sort of policy on who decides what gets put in the community center. Um, and what doesn't. Um, and I think Tess is probably the person that should be writing that.
Can you draft that with her and bring it to us at a future meeting? And the question still ends up being, what do we, what, this clock has been on our agenda.
Agenda for a long time.
Six months if not.
So this is pretty.
And I said, I thi- I think it's a, I mean, I've looked at it. It's a beautiful clock. I'm like, it's a beautiful clock and it's going to be, um. You know, I know we talked about not putting it in the town hall because of potential damage. And we're kinda squirreling it away in the puzzle room at the community center.
Uh, yeah, but I would say we're pretty lucky to get that clock.
I know we're lucky to get that.
Let's just vote on it tonight then. Yes, no? Did you know Daniel Burnap? Where he lived? Post-farm.
Yeah.
Does everybody know that, realize that?
So he lived across Route Six.
Right on the.
Across for Burnap.
That's where he, and he, and he built, and he built clocks in this, upstairs in there.
Yeah, that was the last place he built them.
Yep. So we're pretty lucky. That's a pretty good thing. A- as much as the safety concern of mine, uh, you know, we would be. Wouldn't be very good if we didn't take this. I think it's a very good piece of history, Andover. But, you know. Anne's gonna be in charge of the safety of it though. That's the whole thing.
You know, one other thing that, um, Jeff mentioned, and this is Daniel Polino who owns the clock. He does want to, um, make sure that it is insured in the building. And also that, um. He's retaining ownership. He's just loaning it to us. And he's putting into his, his will and things like that, that if anything happened to him, it would go back to his family. So it's not a donation, it's a loan.
Right, so we're just storing his expensive clock for him, is what we're doing.
Yep.
And ensuring.
Yeah, you can look at it that way.
Oh, we have to insure it also?
Well, we need to know if it's insured for being in the building or do we have to have a special rider to cover that? We don't know yet.
We will, uh, eventually, I, that was a question I asked Kerma long ago. Um, if they want to ensure, if it's supposed to be insured for full replacement value. Then it does need, that does need to be listed directly on our insurance policy. That is possible.
Thirty thousand dollars.
But the last time we had it, it got assessed. But then in the condition it was before rebuilding, it was not worth that. So we would have to get the assessor to certify that that's what it's actually worth now. And then we could insure it for that. Then Kermit will separately insure that.
As of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, it says thirty thousand dollars insurance value. From the man who does the appraisal.
Have we sat there, Eric, and asked Kermit what this is gonna cost the town?
Uh, I don't think it was going to be much. I don't have an exact amount.
Did you get a range?
No, but the building's worth more than a million dollars or a million dollars. So adding thirty thousand to that is not going to appreciably change the insurance bill for that.
Depends upon if they put it as a rider and they require us to pay separately as a piece of jewelry or piece of art, so, um.
Yeah, honestly, last time I discussed this was Kerma, was about a year ago. So I can't tell you that.
Did they ma- mention how much of an addition it would be? About? Do you remember?
No.
How about we push it off another month?
What other questions do we have for Eric to answer before?
The insurance costs, so we know what we're dealing with and then, um, if Anne and Tess are in agreement on the spot. And we'll come back the next time and at least have an understanding of here's our additional dollars. It may not be in anything. But if there's additional cost to it, we've gotta know about it, cause.
Right.
I, I don't wanna. I don't wanna try to indicate that Tess was on board with putting the clock here. You would have to ask her that directly.
I understand, but the issue is. Probably as close to you stated it as possible is that, uh, it is, and, and, you know, it's a combination of all these things. It's a very nice clock. It's very pertinent to the Town of Andover. It has a huge historic value. Where Mr. Polino is re- restoring it and this is a great place to. Put that asset and have it have some. Give some value to the town. I mean, it's. Give some value to the town. I mean, it's, he is putting it somewhere and getting it insured and. You know. Let's, let's sit there and see what we can do, see how much it's gonna cost Eric and then we'll come back next meeting and we'll vote on it and get it over with. I mean, we're not putting, we're not putting it there anytime soon. It's not even restored.
Yeah, it's, it's just about ready to go.
It's just about ready to go.
He, the man who has been working on the, the clock mechanism is ready to put it back into the case and. And deliver it, you know. The case is at the library right now. In the basement.
The case is at the library. Okay. Okay. I still, I personally still wanna know what the insurance company is gonna do on that. If it's a piece of jewelry, what it's about.
And the policy, Eric.
Good by the owner.
What do you mean by the policy?
For the policy for what, you know? Agree or is gonna be able to go in the community center?
No, 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 this is just on the clock, Eric.
I know, but. Another, another note for Eric.
And with the elephant in the room is we need to really start clamping down and, because. You're gonna get all kinds of in-kind donations and, and. It's just gonna get filled up really quick and. I think right now we should just have a policy of not accepting anything unless it comes to us for approval.
Right.
For now, yeah.
Or.
Where are you gonna put a shelf in one of those rooms?
Well, I have no problem. If you wanna make that the policy, let's make that the policy. On the clock, get the, get the insurance policy and understand the insurance cost, so we can understand what they. This, the keeping that clock in our, in our community center is gonna cost us. Right? And Jeff, if you wanna make a motion that there are no donations, no, no donations are allowed to be accepted by. The community center unless approved by the board of selectmen, I have no problem with that.
Does everybody else have no problem with that?
Well, why wouldn't the community center or the advisory board decide what goes in the community center? I mean, that's the whole reason you have the advisory boards.
Yeah, that's fine too, but I just don't want people just dropping things off. There you go, here's your puzzles.
Okay, what I suggested to Tess was that. She developed a list of things that they need at the community center. To equip it and post that and say, people, if you wanna donate something. Donate one of these things or um. They could give a monetary donation, but don't just drop off your tag sale stuff.
Yeah, we had a list, we had a list before working with Kathy Palazzi. We did have a list, but I just don't know.
Okay, so then we need to resurrect that.
Yeah, because you know, we, we were gonna say, we, I think that was over a year ago and we decided we were gonna wait till the community center was built. I think that kind of got put on the back burner. So, probably need to re-resurrect the list, like you said.
And um, I go up to the Ellington Community Center frequently for a. Support group Parkinson's and they have on their wall in the hallway. A thing that looks like a tree with leaves and each leaf has a family or person's name on it because they gave a donation to the community center. So people give monetary donations that way and then they're recognized by that. And that might be an idea to, to do. I mean, this is the fancy metal creation, but it could even be on wood or something like that. Um, and allow people a way to contribute to the community center.
All good ideas, so.
Yeah.
What are we passing? Are we passing a motion that all donations? Are required to go through the advisory committee?
Sounds good to me.
So, I'll make a motion that. All donations to the community slash senior center. Uh, are required to be approved in advance by the. Uh, center's advisory committee.
Second.
Alright, further discussion? All those in favor? I.
I.
Right, four, nothing? Okay, um. And we're all good with the Burnap clock discussion being postponed until Eric gets us the insurance issues on that and. We can get that approved. Okay? Uh, nine G bid result for the roadside mower, Eric?
Uh, so. There was, so when we went to. Uh, get ready to auction the roadside mower. J-Tuttle and I talked about it a little bit and our concern was sending that to Richie Brothers, the auction house. Was number one, their timeframe. Timeframes are fairly short during the auction. And the second thing was probably the only person that's gonna really buy a roadside mower. Is another town or a public or a parks division. So we basically offered it on the state of Connecticut's. Public Works kind of like a. A forum run by the T two center and said we would accept sealed bids for that. Um, and depending on what those bids came in at, we would either accept the bid or we would send it. Uh, we would then go out to auction. Um, and part of the reason is. When you send something to auction, you end up chewing quite a bit of fees up. Uh, with it and this gives you the ability to do it. Um, it's basically a, a transaction between the two towns. So we sent that information to you as a board. You know, Jay seems to think that's a pretty reasonable uh fee. Um, and that we would get more money doing it this way, selling it to the town of Fairfield. Than we would be if we uh, we put it out to auction. So that's his recommendation, but ultimately you as a board have to agree with that or not agree with that.
So his max for this, the, those two pieces of equipment was thirty thousand six hundred.
Uh, so. Yes, correct.
And so you're saying you got twenty six thousand dollars?
Correct. We, we did only get one bid on it. We had bites and we had several towns look at it, but Fairfield was the only town that actually uh, put in a bid on it.
Okay, and what are the auction fees if we went to the auction? Just as a question.
Uh, I think they're around ten percent of the total. They're more for cheaper things, but for when you get up in the twenty thousand dollar range. I think it's around ten percent uh, is what the auction fee is.
Anybody have uh, any problem with this? Okay.
I just wanna make sure where the money goes, where the money's gonna go after the sale and. I know Eric suggested a public works fund, but I think that limits us to what we can spend the money on. I think we should probably put it in. Fund balance or another account, so we can use it for other uses if need be, if there's an urgency.
Contingency?
Yeah, contingency, yeah.
You don't put it, I mean, we don't put it in contingency, we don't.
And.
I mean, to be, to be really, to be really honest, technically, I don't think we can put the money in a fund.
Well, I think it's gotta go back in the town.
General fund.
General fund.
And then we would budget for it the next cycle.
Correct, because that's what we did with the new mower.
I'm, I'm just asking, Eric, that's just a, that, that's like a charter issue for me, like.
I mean, I, I think actually the board of finance has the ability to allocate that. But I don't know, that would be. Um, that's either a town treasurer or an auditor question. We've certainly done it in the past. In the past, the board of finances generally returned the money to the account. You know, for which those capital expenditures, when the fire truck. Uh, was um, when they just sold the fire truck. That money was returned to the fire department's capital equipment fund. Um, in the past, public works equipment that got sold. The act, the profits went back into the public works equipment fund. I would have assumed you would put the one for the vehicle for senior transportation into the senior transportation account. Or that one could go in the general one, because there isn't a senior vehicle capital fund. But. You know.
Okay, so, so we're here today to approve the sale to Fairfield. That's what you would like us to do to start with and then we, we can go on to the separate discussion about where we recommend. The board of finance to put the money is a different issue, but we don't, we, we, we are not. Setting where that money is going. We can recommend where we want the board of finance to put it, but it's the board of finances responsibly.
Correct, as far as I understand. At least that's how it's been done in the past.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the money for the new mower when I came out of the general fund, correct?
No, the money for the new mower came out of the public works equipment fund.
Okay.
Well, let's be, let's be fair on that one.
We had, that money came.
We had a, we had a special time meeting.
Yeah, it came for the general fund, the public works fund.
Yeah, there was no money in any fund. There was no money in any fund to do that.
Well, but what, so this is where it gets a little complicated. So what we, in, in this, you know, we're still working out with the auditor. Whether we really did take it from the general fund last year or we took it from this year's public works equipment fund. Because what we went to the public with was a plan that we would agree to buy the mower now. But they would charge us in the current fiscal year. So we made the payment for that in the current fiscal year. From the money that was deposited into the public works equipment fund.
Correct, correct. We agreed to buy it, which we had to buy it before the end of this fiscal year.
But we didn't have to pay for it until this fiscal year.
Well, isn't, isn't that on a loan program or a lease program for five years?
Yeah, it is a five-year lease program. However, the, the further complicating point is that. The town treasurer thinks we can't actually do it because we signed the li- loan documents. Technically before July one, so that makes it last year's expenditure, not this year's expenditure. So.
Okay.
We have a question with the auditor as to exactly how that gets treated financially, but. You know, the, the intention was always to spend money that public works actually add. That was not meant to be an additional appropriation for that vehicle. The reason why it went to a public meeting was because it's a loan or a lease. And all loans or leases require public uh, approval.
And it requires public approval because we had to sign it before we put the new budget in place.
Well.
So you, there was a timing issue related to this whole thing. It had to be done in that manner because. The rest of the payments are all being budgeted within the town standard budgeting process.
Correct.
It was just the first go-round.
Correct.
Okay, so. Let's approve, I mean, if, you know, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the sale of the. Uh, John Deere roadside mower. With two spare heads and the twenty, two, two thousand and one Alamo rear three-point hitch mower head. To the town of Fairfield, uh, or the town of Fairfield Parks and Rec Department. For twenty-six thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor? I. I, four to zero, Eric. Now Jeff, do you wanna make, and we have nine H, the equipment sale, proceeds from the equipment sales. Do you wanna make a recommendation?
I went talking about all the sales and talking about the tractor, the, the plow truck, the senior transportation bus. All that equipment, where is that money going back to?
So the answer is, I don't know yet. It's gonna go back to where the board of finance decides to allocate it.
Man, I'd like to put it back in the general fund and then the board of finance can allocate it wherever they feel fit, where it's needed in the future. And I don't wanna just put it in one fund and just, you know, pigeonhole it into one area and one nest egg.
Okay.
Sound, sound reasonable?
If that's what you wanna make as a motion, I will uh, recommend to the board of finance that that's where they put all the money. They just return it to the general fund.
I'll make a motion that the sale of all surplus equipment from the town of Andover in the recent sales. Um, goes back to the general fund.
I'll, I'll second for discussion purposes from my end, like. And so Eric, in the past, what, what has happened is that those funds would go back into. So let's sit there and say, we bought a new tractor, we bought a new roadside mower. And this is just the sale of those assets goes back in, has gone back into in the past. Department of Public Works Fund, you know, so. It offsets the overall cost of that piece of equipment that was purchased and you would do that on all sales? If you had a fund available?
So. Generally speaking, in the past, when equipment was sold by. Public Works surplus equipment or old equipment, that money was returned to the capital fund. For public works equipment. And the same thing has occurred with the money for the fire department. Um, you know, when they sold the, their truck recently. That went back into the fire department capital fund.
Alright, so that's what we've done in the past and.
Right, doesn't mean we have to do that.
The motion that Jeff is asking for and that I seconded is that, that. Funds from equipment, any equipment, sales from any department go back into the general fund and then the board of finance. Or the board of selectmen can give the board of finance options as to where to spend those dollars. Okay, I, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, basically what happens, I mean, what would happen, Eric, right, is next year's budget would come up and we would say, okay, we. We had proceeds or, or revenue generated from the sale of some type of asset of fifty thousand dollars. And we can sit there and say at the budget cycle, okay, we, we wanna put that money into um, the AES capital fund. Because they're gonna require that money a- and we still may have to budget for public works to get equipment. But it's not the budgeted amount plus the sales.
Correct, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. If, if that's what you would choose to do, that's what you choose to do.
Yeah, alright, so, so, but.
I mean, for instance, I, I, this is just an example. I noticed that, I mean, Eric, two years ago wanted to get a Chevy Bolt electric vehicle. Now they're down to around twelve thousand dollars. We can get one for twelve, thirteen thousand dollars with fifteen thousand miles on them, so. If that opportunity comes up and we need another vehicle for senior transportation, that money's available. Maybe we can allocate it for that. I just don't wanna pigeonhole it in one account or one fund and not another, so.
Well, the, the. Difference is if it's in an existing fund.
We'd have to have board of finance transfer it to another fund.
Yeah, you could always transfer it from fund to fund anyway, but once it's in the general fund. You know, then you run into the uh, was it quarter percent or half percent? Limit at which you can spend things out of. So, you know, you're more likely to require a town meeting, but that may be okay.
That's fine with me. That, that, that.
Well, no, that's, that's not.
Charter revision, the charter revision, if that passes, we'll do away with that.
No, overall, it will not do away with town meetings for those types of options. It's not true because, and you wouldn't have to go to a town meeting if it's all in. Incorporated within the budget process. You'd end up at a, a budget meeting. They could cut those items that got approved. Items that got approved out, but it would then go to referendum and get voted on by the public in a budget, as a budget line item, because.
Yes, yes.
Also what was put in with the charter revision is, and simply because um. Adrian was not happy about the roadside mower and how the roadside mower got approved. He wanted to put in uh an adjustment to the charter. That if we were contemplating spending anything over two hundred thousand dollars. That it wouldn't go to town meeting, it would go directly to referendum. In the situation that we bought this roadside mower, which is fine, he's trying to make it more transparent and. Give a bigger group of people an opportunity to vote on something rather than the individuals that were at the public meeting, so. I sit there and look at this and go, okay, if we don't buy anything. I- if there is an immediate need and we have to sit there and buy something in excess of two hundred thousand dollars. We're gonna end up in referendum. If we have something like this, and there wasn't an immediate need to try to get it before the end of the fiscal year. It will just go into the budget process and get approved. Right, I mean, we would say, we wanna buy, we wanna buy a piece of equipment, it's gonna have a five year lease on it. And this is what we're gonna budget for this year, and then the public either approves or disapproves. But. I, I have no problem, so we got a motion on the floor that all, all proceeds from equipment sales will go into the general fund. Basics of the motion that Jeff made, right? Uh, any further discussion on the topic? Alright, all those in favor, I.
Right.
All those opposed, or nothing? Okay, so that was nine H. New business. Solar at AES, did everybody have an opportunity to look at that? Uh, and what Eric wrote related to the solar program at AES? Eric, I know I asked the question when we were on with the chairman of the board of education, have we gotten any information as to? How they plan on installing those and what is the, what is, what is, what is the issue if there's a roof problem?
So, their goal is to use a ballasted system to minimize penetrations on the roof. They're still awaiting the final structural analysis of the roof to see whether they can add the roof loading. For a ballasted system as opposed to a direct penetration system. Uh, um, the town would be i- if. There's, if the town had to repair a roof section under where the panels went. Um, we would have to pay them for removal of it, uh, so we could fix the roof underneath. Um, that would be a town obligation, not an obligation as part of the package. Um, so it might be worth an independent evaluation of all the roof. Conditions prior to doing it. You know, their roofing company has evaluated it and said that they think it's fine and it will. The roof will be okay for the length of the system. Um, but depending on, you know, whether you wanna take their word for it or. Um, your own, you could hire a roofing contractor, Zen Commercial Roofing or an equivalent. To give you an evaluation.
How much, how much of the roof was done on the four hundred thousand dollar project that we did before and how much of the? The panels are sitting on that newer portion?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Which sections of the school we're talking about?
So if you looked through the. For, can I just share my screen real quick?
Or go ahead.
Let's say share. So you can see the, the roof layout and where they, they're not using the gymnasium. But they're using most of the rest of the flat roofs.
I mean, wasn't the whole new roof that was just done, the gymnasium?
I know the gymnasium was done, I don't know if other portions of the roof were done also, that was kinda before my time, so. I just don't really have a feel for it.
And this has been evaluated anticipating just snow load, if we had a, a really heavy snow load in one year. Cause I can remember, what was it, uh, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, we were out shoveling school roofs because of the snow?
Well, again, we don't have their final structural analysis back yet. Um, so I can't, that's something I can't uh specifically address. Um, the, the, basically they had to decrease. The system size pretty considerably, simply because the school is not, does not have three phase power. And almost all of the larger solar systems that go in are designed to work with three phase power and we just don't have that. Um, because we only have a twelve hundred amp single phase power availability. Um, they changed to a micro inverter system. And decreased the system size fairly considerably. Um, but I went over their numbers using kind of pretty realistic numbers for New England in terms of yearly production. Um, so I think what they're claiming is realistic. Um, and I think that system would produce about half the total electrical usage for the school. Um, and the. Given the, the Nres credits, um, I think it's a, it's a pretty good deal. Overall, um, and it would definitely save the, you know, the town quite a bit of money. But, um, it's not as much as they were hoping for, cause they were hoping for a much bigger system size. But given the constraints of the current electrical system, that's kinda what you're stuck with.
Oh, for me, it comes down to the roof condition and. Is there? Is there a problem that we run into after we install the solar panels? Because I am in favor of this, but.
Was it ever looked at to do like a mini solar farm out behind the school in that open area?
Um, I did ask that of the company. And their response was, you know, they generally won't consider standalone. Uh, you know, ground mount systems if they have a roof. That's capable of taking the system size that they need. And because even if they put a separate, you know, ground mount system, they still can't increase the size. Because the size is dictated on their ability to tie into a single paid, single phase twelve hundred amp panel.
Yeah, understood, I'm just looking at future maintenance and then, um, you know, if we do get a storm, the snow load that's gonna be on the roof and. Along with the panels, and not being able to clear the snow off the roof because the panels are there.
Or clearing the snow off the panels.
You can clear the snow off the panels, it's just, it's more difficult.
Oh, much more difficult to shovel when the panels up there.
So what's our next step? We're, we're waiting for documentation to come back in from the, the solar company?
Uh. Yeah, they have a bunch more they have to, to get, you asked me to kind of that the process. And look at what they're actually putting on and determine whether it's realistic. Um, I, I don't feel like I'm capable of assessing. Um, the roof condition for commercial flat roofs. So if you wanted to do that, you would have to, you would have to hire. A, you know, a company to evaluate the roofs. Um, you know, if that's a concern, other than that, wait, wait for their structural design uh completion.
Did you get the date that the other, I mean, cause I know when we did the roof, I mean, Adrian was. Tremendously involved in that. But when we did that, we did not do the entire roof.
Understood, I don't know the ages of the roofs that are there.
Okay.
I do not.
No, if you could get that from the AES and find out the, the ages of the. I mean, because if you go back up to your, your image of, of panels. I mean, I remember it was the entire, we had a problem with the gymnasium, we did the entire. Part that they're not utilizing and maybe a little part that that first U is on. I don't think we did anything where the majority of the entire system is on the roof, so I would like to know the ages of those. And we probably should just pay to get a roofing contractor out there to evaluate it.
Right, that's kinda what I think.
I wouldn't, I would hate to put that up there and then. Have a, have a problem with the roof and. But I understand where the board of education is going and they wanna do this, but I would hate to sit there and see there be a. Roof problem, and then we gotta take the panels down and pay somebody to take the panels down on top of the cost of. Doing the roof, I'd like to know the ages, number one, that'd be my biggest issue.
What would be the cost of that Eric, to get that decided how, what condition the roof is in, think?
I don't know, I mean, usually, I don't know. I don't wanna try to give you a number, that's not something I could estimate.
I think we are all in agreement about the condition of the roof, I think we all need to know that.
Now, had the solar company checked it too or not?
Yeah, the solar company said they have no concerns with the roof as it is.
They're usually picky, so. I don't know. Probably good, because I know everybody I've talked to that's gotten solar panels, lots of people say, oh, I thought the roof was good, but I had to get a new roof. Because the solar company said they wouldn't put it on without a new roof, because they, they seem to really check it. At least for houses.
Well, let's sit there, Eric, and um try to find out a cost, so. I'm assuming that the solar company is still gonna do some work and still has some things to do and we should sit there and, and find out if. The board of education has gotten a, a separate analysis of the roof. I would love to know the ages, that would be, just get me the, get me the ages for the various. Spots that they're gonna put these panels on, because in my head. Knowing what we did before, I gotta believe the entire right side of the school up toward the old or up toward the basketball courts. That going that way, everything is, that's all older roof. At least in my mind, simply by what was done six, six, eight years ago. But, you know, you think about it, how time flies, if that new roof is eight years old, then the, the old roof is. Old.
Alright, we'll check it out.
Alright, it's a great idea.
It's a good idea.
Um, so we talked about ten B community center policy on donations, we already did that.
Yep.
Right, um, ten C authorize, authorization to sign master agreement with DOT every ten years?
Yeah, so this is at the very back of the packet, cause it was really long and nobody's gonna read through it. Basically, every ten years, the Department of Transportation asks towns. To uh authorize a master municipal agreement with DOT. Um, regarding funding on roads and things of that nature. I looked, Bob Burbank was the last person to sign it in two thousand and fourteen, it's coming up for renewal. Um, I put it in your packet if you wanna renew it, it would be something the first selectman would have to sign.
Well, I flipped through the hundred and thirty pages of it. Okay, so it's something that we need to do to get the DOT to do work with us.
Correct.
Somebody has to sign it?
Yeah, that's a Jeff sign, not a me sign. As far as I can tell.
My motion to have Jeff. Sign the authorization to master agreement for the DOT.
I'll second that.
Alright, further discussion, all those in favor, I, or nothing, okay. Uh, Eric, uh, ten D signage, Hop River Trail, Alignis sign, signage project on the trail?
Okay, so I'll give you the Cliff Notes for this. The, I showed you a picture of what the sign looked like. The DOT has produced these. Um, and they have requested that the towns. Put one of these signs on all the road approaches where roads cross the Hop River Trail. Um, so I drove all of the crossings with the public works foreman. Um, his concern, which echoes mine, is that we don't want these things. Between the pedestrian ahead sign and the pedestrian crossing sign, cause you don't want a third sign in between to distract. So it's gonna have to be a, a decision. You know, each intersection is gonna have these in a different spot. Um, if you, if you, um, as a local traffic authority are willing to allow the DOT. To uh have their signs up. That's your, you know, your responsibility as a local traffic authority. Um, you know, it's basically to build additional awareness for the Connecticut State Parks. Um, they're trying to do this across the board for Hop River, Airline, Larkin, um. You know, park trails, so that's their request. Um, and I said I would bring that to you as a board, acting as a local traffic authority. Um, and get your input, but. What we did is we looked at it and it's kind of a inner, it's kind of a crossing by crossing on where we can put it. Without it being visually distracting, um, and causing problems, so. If you're willing to have us put them up, I would work with the public works foreman, um. You know, all the materials and signs will be supplied by the, by the DEEP, but public works would install them. Um, where they're least invasive in the town.
I don't have a problem with them putting up the signs.
What do they look like? You showed me a picture before, but uh, what's the dimensions on them?
Uh, they're twenty four by twenty four. Um, for the ones that are going on the town roads. And then on the state roads, I think it's a thirty by thirty uh triangular sign.
Wow, those are huge.
Crossings, what crossings do they have that they're gonna put that big sign on?
So the, the crossing will be in one spot and that is uh at Lake Road. What the, the D E E P wants to do is identify. One parking area, basically every X number of miles down the trail. Um, so it's publicly identified from Route Six. So those signs will be on Route Six, presuming that uh. The encroachment permit is pulled and they get authority from DOT, um, to put them there.
So they wanna put a sign on Lake Road directing people to the parking lot that's attached to the trap?
Yeah, there's one going in, it steals crossing, one going in there and one going in. On Hop River Road towards that new parking area. Um, after the bridge is completed on Hop River Road.
Okay.
Correct.
You're, so you're asking the approval of one sign, basically?
No, there's, there's, they're making two, two basic requests. Request number one is signs, one sign from each direction on all the town roads that cross the Hop River. Trail.
Smaller ones.
Right, so like Lake Road, for instance. And then what they've asked for is they're, they're trying to get permission from. And then what they've asked for is they're, they're trying to get permission from. Or they, they've got tentative permission from DOT. To put signs on uh Route Six, directing them to the larger parking areas. On the Hop River Trail. And what I like about that is the biggest problem we have is people parking on. Some of the smaller crossings where there's no parking. And we've even specified it is no parking, but they park there anyway because they don't know where to park. So I look at this as a way to direct where visitors are likely to park. Um, so they're kind of out of the way and they're in our biggest parking area and leave the rest of the. The official parking areas for town residents. That's how I kind of view it. You know.
I just think those big signs in each crossing area is kind of overkill. I mean, I look at the East Coast Greenway signs, they're much smaller. It identifies the, you know, the crossing and that there's a greenway there. I mean, they're huge. It's gonna be overwhelming.
Yep.
Bridge, covered bridge or not?
No, as far as I know, there's. We haven't talked about that one. I don't think we have a sign for those, for that crossing.
Okay.
Do you want to request smaller signs? I don't know, I just think it's overkill for what we're doing on a small road. I think like something maybe a foot. Twelve by twelve or you know, even eight by eight or something's more. Suitable.
I don't think you'd ever see an eight by eight sign driving. I mean, can you see the the markers on the rail trail when you're riding by them now? No, because we made the numbers. They made the numbers too small. And you know, you can't even see it riding by. So I don't think in a car. You know, twenty-five, twenty-four by twenty-four is the standard kind of awareness sign. Um, the question is simply whether you want to allow them to be placed on town roads or not.
That's really, that's all, that's, I mean, I'm just sitting there thinking about the one I drive by five times a day. That's. A sign on each side of the road. Is what they're asking for, that big.
So one, if you're coming down Lake Road, you would see one sign that says Hop River Trail. State Park, Linear State Park. And if you were coming the other direction, you were coming up Lake Road, you would see a sign through that.
It's like you don't know. Oh, there, because there's already a crossing sign and a big crosswalk. Alright. I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily have a huge problem with it. I think it's a, it is a big sign. I mean, it's. Kind of, I think it's, I mean, honestly, I think it's kind of overkill for the road near here.
Are are the signs already made here?
Yep.
Can you share your screen? I thought you had a sample of it, right?
Uh, yep, I certainly can. Hang on.
Can we take him down if we make a mistake? I mean, I just, I hate putting more signage up because you know what it does for people trying to cross the path? It creates sightline problems.
Well, and and to be honest, that was my biggest. Concern. And the concern of the Public Works Foreman. Is that we have to put these very carefully so they don't affect sightlines. Which is why we can't say to you, we're gonna put them X number of feet from the trail. Because it's gonna be a decision on each road where they don't impact sightlines. Um, like Lake Road, I think we can put one of these on the backs of the pedestrian. Signs, right? Um, and they don't affect the pedestrian ahead visibility and they're the same size as the existing signs. But on some roads, we can't put them there. So I think we really have to tailor the approach to each road. So that they're, you know, they don't impact sightlines and they're not in between. The existing stop ahead and pedestrian crosswalk sign, if that makes sense.
I mean, I don't know why you just don't put them at the entrance when you. Go from the road to the trail. Why don't you just put them on the trail going both ways? You know, basically saying you're on the Hop River Trail. Well, those Greenway signs.
But you don't need a, those signs are up the trail. Right?
I mean, I don't think most, I, I don't know, I I'm more concerned with the pedestrian crossing signs in the crosswalk than. Putting these there. I think they're just gonna be a huge detriment to people trying to see up and down the road to cross. That's my opinion.
Well, what I would say is we're not going to put them anywhere where it impacts the sightline of anybody crossing the trail.
Right. It's gonna be difficult because you've already got pedestrian crossing signs.
Well, I mean, so. What I'm saying is that a lot of these are gonna be quite far away from the trail. Like Shoddy Mill, I think there's an existing sign we can put it on. It's at least a quarter mile back from the trail. That's probably the most logical point for it. What I can't give you is the same scheme for every single road. Because we looked at all the roads and said, okay, here, where could we put the sign where it where it doesn't impact everything?
I mean, stupid question. Could you just put them underneath the pedestrian signs on the same pole?
No, because underneath all the pedestrian signs, you have the enhanced reflective strip. So, which is part of what an enhanced crosswalk is supposed to have. So no, I don't think you can put them directly under.
Did you mention that you're putting on the back of some other sign?
What I'm saying is I can't tell you on any given road where we're gonna put these things exactly. So that it does not impact sightlines. But our goal, if we put them, if you authorize them, is to put these in such a place that. You do see them when you're driving, but it's it's in a position, it's far enough away that does not impact the current. Pedestrian crossing signage, because that's a really important thing there, because that's a safety.
So Eric, if we give you the authority to put them up, you're going to put them up in the best possible spot for the town of Andover.
That is my goal, yes.
And and if you can't find a good spot, you're not gonna put it up, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I authorize Eric to have Jay put up these signs wherever they. Find them in a safe spot. Where they can be put in a safe spot.
I'll second that.
Okay, so you're making a motion for that?
Yeah, motion, yeah. Almost, it's almost eleven o'clock, right?
I know. Alright, so you're making a motion to install the signs in appropriate places that don't impede safety. Okay. Eric, you you have your marching orders, right? We're gonna vote on this now. All those in favor? All those opposed? Jeff Murray, so three, one.
I think it's a safety violation.
So, um, three, one, Eric, don't put them in, if you don't put them up, nobody on this board is gonna be upset. They didn't go up.
You know, my my primary goal is the safety of trail users and the public in general. I'm not gonna put up any signs which I think are visually distracting. I'm not gonna put them up where I think it's visually distracting.
Okay, um. Do we have to do anything with the deep trail signage on town roads?
Uh, that was the deep trail signage on town roads.
Do we have to do anything with the encroachment permits for the sign on Route Six?
Um, so my question for you is, are you opposed to. The DEP signs going up indicating that there is trail parking on Lake Road?
I mean, I'm not. I mean, there's already trail parking on Lake Road. So what would we get? We would get potentially a passerby that. Comes and parks and uses the trail?
Correct.
It's a huge sign. I mean, that's just a big sign. That's that's like a billboard going on Route Six for the trail. And it's not this sign, is it? Is it this sign just increased in size?
Yep. That sign's six inches bigger.
And it's gonna say trail parking? What's it gonna say?
Yeah, I think they're just gonna have an arrow underneath it with direction of the parking. Is their plan.
And when are they wanting to install these? That picture.
I would think they want them installed sooner rather than later. But the bigger signs haven't been created yet.
Tell them to get us the graphics so we sit there and see what they're talking about.
Okay. And you want to review that at the next meeting then?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have a problem with that? No, okay. Uh, item eleven, approval of minute meetings from our nine to nine, twenty twenty-four regular meeting. Reapproved the means from the meeting minutes from nine, our meeting at nine, nine, twenty twenty-four. And seconded it. All those in favor? Aye. Uh, the treasurer's report was included in our packet. Any questions for Eric related to that information? Okay. Yeah, go through. The check register was there. Nothing else. And then there was other information provided, so. Eric, do you have anything to add on any of the other items? Because I didn't see the town aid road. I didn't see an appropriation transfer. I didn't see an over expenditure report or summary of audit status. Were they there?
Uh, they were not. There's nothing there for that. Um, I can say verbally, the uh. Town treasurer is getting fairly close to being complete with her portion. Of the uh audit. Um, and is talking about turning that over to Michael. We just have to go over the capital asset list. There's not a lot left to do for that before the town is complete with its portion of the audit.
Alright, good news. Um. Uh, anybody have anything else they want to deal with in that section?
I was just wondering why, why is the Board of Ed, um, check register inception here? That's something we've never had.
Because nobody ever sent it to me so I could put it in.
So.
Probably sent it to you this time?
No, they didn't send it to me.
So, eh, um, I I was ignoring that. To sit there and move on, so we don't have. A significant level of discussion related to that.
Okay.
Are we, are we good then?
If the board doesn't want to see that in the future, I'm happy to leave it out. It's a pain to get it anyway.
It's great to have more information. It is.
It is.
Always good to have information. I will never tell you not to provide this information, but. Let's move on. Tax collector's report. We got the dashboard for the tax collector. It shows our total balance and total due, um. It differs slightly from the treasurer's report up top, but it's it's really close, so. Tax collector also included unpaid taxes. On properties, bunch of pages, too many pages. And then there is a section on page. One thirty-three of tax refunds. For a thousand dollars and twenty-three point sixty-seven cents, of which my wife is a hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. So I will not be voting on this. Okay, we're not gonna approve those? Come on, let's go.
I'll move to approve the refund.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Three opposed, I'll oppose, three one. Alright. Um, the departmental reports were all in the package, the assessor's office that was there. The. Building Department, we made eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars last month. In the building department, Department of Public Works, and I believe that was it.
How much do we make in our stiff account?
Last month.
I don't have that number for you this month. My apologies.
No, it should be there. It'd be on the first page of the treasurer's report. Page eighty-six. Should have been there, or it's on the bottom. No, interest income of the month, uh. For the three months, we earned thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So approximately thirteen thousand dollars per month on this different count.
Very good.
Uh, anybody have any questions on the, um. The departmental reports, you know, I'd rather just keep moving this long and get to public speak. If anybody has any problems with any of the departmental reports, please speak now. Okay, Eric, no correspondence?
Uh, nope.
Okay, can you stop sharing your screen?
Oh, sure. Sorry about that. Didn't realize I was still sharing it.
Okay, um, we're gonna move on to item sixteen, public speak. Um, Bob Hamburg, you're first if you're awake.
Yes, I'm awake. Thank you. Um, so I, uh, is, yeah, I see Attorney O'Brien is still on with us. I wanted to to just clarify something that was said a long time ago by Mr. King in his, uh. Um, proposal for for selecting him, you know, in his his stump speech. He um said very clearly and definitively that it was, it it was there in writing in the law. That a Republican had to be picked because um Paula King was a Republican. And you know, this kind of stands in sharp contrast with, you know, I'm looking at in in the packet for this meeting. Attorney O'Brien drafted, it looked to be a seven or eight page analysis. Of what the minority representation actually meant, complete with uh citations of of uh cases. You know, precedent law as well as citations, relevant citations of of state law. So I just wanted to to get on the record that it is the town attorney's uh learned opinion that it. A Republican was not necessary, uh merely just the absence of a Democrat. Is that correct, Dennis?
Yes, that's my opinion.
Alright. I just wanted to correct that for the record.
Okay. Um, Shannon Loudon jumped up into second place. You're up.
Terrific. Thank you, Jeff. So I'm gonna answer your question about why the tri-board policy is necessary. And that's because there is no defined process for how the Board of Education funds its capital projects. Or for how the Board of Education might deposit money into or withdraw money from. The newly created AES AES Capital Fund. And there are current projects at AES that require funding and might be considered capital projects. And now I'm gonna spend two minutes just because I'm tired of addressing all these issues and answering the same questions. The bottom line is, the policy was brought about after there was a fundamental disagreement between the town, the Board of Selectment and the Board of Education. As to the Board of Ed statutory authority to pay for capital projects at AES. So at the meeting of the three boards, one year ago, Robert and England and I were tasked to draft a policy between the Board of Ed. And the Board of Finance, not the Board of Selectment, to address how capital projects might be considered at AES in the future. The Board of Finance later suggested that the Board of Selectment also be involved in the process, so we drafted a tri-board policy. As far as the Board of Ed is concerned. As far as the Board of Ed is concerned, it had the statute authority, statutory authority to do exactly what it did in June of twenty twenty-three. Which was to reallocate money that had been budgeted to it to repave the upper parking lot at AES. So the Board of Ed believes that there already is a process, but the town disagreed. So if there is a process, a policy wouldn't have been necessary. By charter, the Board of Ed is not subject to the CIP process, which is in line with state statute, especially because. There is no definition in the statutes about what is a capital project and many budgeted investments at AES. Exceed the CIP dollar threshold. Further, the CIP consideration and approval doesn't complete the process. All the CIP does is approve of capital projects. And projects approved by CIP are then considered by the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, but not the Board of Education. So the Board of Education agreed that it needed a capital fund in addition to the two percent non-lapsing account. Given that, as somebody said, there are statutory limitations, and I believe this was the disagreement between Dennis and Eric. Um, the statute says specifically, and if the auditor disagrees, we'll see. That each expenditure from the two percent non-lapsing account, quote unquote, shall be made only for educational purposes. So there currently is no policy to allow the Board of Education to have any say. As to how the money in the account that was created by the town for AES capital projects will be spent. Which is contrary to state statute, which says that the Board of Ed is the one who's responsible for projects in its buildings. On its land, et cetera. I disagree with Dennis's proposed agreement and how it changed the policy that I spent a year crafting. Um, and I'll leave it at that, um, because you've offered Jeff to have people uh write to. Dennis about how we might do that. The only other thing that I'll suggest is. Um, if there doesn't wanna be a tri-board policy, maybe what happens is. The Board of Ed just asked the Board of Finance to put money into the capital account. And the Board of Finance says, okay, puts the money in the capital account. And then when the Board of Education needs to spend money on capital projects, it asks the Board of Finance to take the money out of the account. That's what I thought was initially proposed, but that didn't fly, so I'll leave it at that. Thanks very much for letting me speak so long.
Thank you. Bill Penn.
I'm good, thank you.
Uh, Doris Maldonado.
Nothing to say. Thank you.
Stephen King.
Um, first and foremost, I uh have to disagree with Attorney O'Brien's interpretation of the statute. And I was gonna plan on sending the information to the Secretary of State for uh. To to find a little bit more about this. I was also curious about the uh. Um, information in the charter regarding tie votes. Uh, why wasn't that addressed?
You're asking for a direct answer. It had never become a problem before.
There's specific language in the charter regarding resolving ties.
Then we're gonna have to look at that.
I think that's in uh ele- elections, isn't it? I'm I'm, I don't have it in front of me, Steve, but uh. About flipping a coin or something or. I don't, I don't know. I I've seen so many of these things, I I I don't, I. I'll take a look at it, happy to.
I just happened to do a quick search and happened to find that, so just in provision you might wanna take a closer look at.
I will, I'll be glad to.
Okay, Diane Grunier.
Yes. Hello. It's it's a late one, right? For us people in insomnia, it's no problem. Getting old has its advantages. Um, I just wanted to go back to um the Safety Committee Report. Um, there was something in there about um providing stop the bleed kits for. The new community center and for the, I guess, town hall. Um, could you look at the library as well? Can can they get one over there? Um, and the same thing with the first aid kit. Um, I don't know what the library's um first aid kit looks like, but if you're looking at the community center, town hall. Um, the library too could could take, could use a look at it or something like that. So I appreciate you taking a look at that for me.
All right, Joanne Ebert.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, I just, I'll go quick, but um I just wanted to say that I wanted to commend. Um, the four individuals that spoke tonight. I always like to listen to people that are interested in. Community service and I thought they all brought a lot to the table. Disappointed that there couldn't be a resolution with such good candidates. Um, and I I'm gonna look on the charter too, because I know that we had a lot of, on our recent Board of Finance, we had a lot of. You know, ties and went back and forth quite a bit, so. Um, I'd be interested in hearing that because it's kind of disappointing to have to go back out when we had. You know, several um candidates that seemed that they could bring something good to the table. Anyways, um, the, and then um, I'm definitely not in favor of those signs without all of you. Going out and taking a look at it. It just seems like so many signs to bring into the town, so big. Um, yeah, I'm not in favor of that without taking a good look at how big of a sign. Would look out there on all those, you know, our town's so small and it seems like there's gonna be so many of them around town. I'm just really concerned about that. And I truly feel, I have to bring this up, I feel like trails are taking over a lot of our meetings and everything's about trails and this and that. When we have so many projects in town that are still undone. Great grant money that we we have been given and we're still waiting for projects to be completed. I'm all about walking, health, biking, trails, but. I feel like every, every meeting, there's a huge issue about trails when we have a lot more things to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you. Leanne Hutchinson.
Hi, um, nothing, thank you.
Okay, Rachel Bowman.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, did I miss anyone? Okay. All right, thank you, everybody, for attending. We're gonna move on to item seventeen, adjournment.
Just before we adjourn, I just looked at the um, the charter. It says, it says municipal elections. I don't know if this replacement is an election. That's, it says municipal elections. It's just if there's a tie, there's a coin toss. Okay, so does that, does it apply? I don't know. That's for Dennis to decide.
All right. Um, item seventeen, adjournment. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Aye. All right, thank you very much for attending, everybody. We appreciate it.